Okay.
Okay.
Here we are, 7:30 Thursday, May 4th, 2017. This is the Situate Planning Board here. We have an agenda that's been posted. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Starting off at 7:30 with a public hearing for scenic road permit for Zero Summer Street.
My name is Jeff Assett. I'm civil engineer with Morse Engineering. And I'm here for this scenic road application of properties at Zero Summer Street. And we were actually in front of you for the same matter about a couple of months ago. And you issued a scenic permit, scenic road permit for the road, for the driveway opening to Summer Street. But it turned out that there were three abutters that didn't make the abutters list and weren't notified. So we wanted to refile for that reason. And then secondly, we discovered that we were going to need a second opening of the stone wall, which would be temporary. So we're back in front of you this evening. The property is about 13.5 acres. And the project is to build one single-family home on the property. And it involved the, there's a stone wall that runs along the entire front of the property. So we need to create the driveway opening going in. So that's one of the openings. We're calling it out to be 20 feet wide and the stones to be replaced back on the same wall. And there are no trees in that area that have to be removed within the right-of-way. The second opening that we need is to drill the well. It's located a little bit further down and it'll be a temporary opening. So we're specifying it to be 16 feet wide, pile up the stones right next to it, and then as soon as the well driller is done drilling the well, we'll put the stones back in place and reconstruct the wall. So that's in a location where the wall is in poor condition, so we'll be able to actually make it better than it is now. And there are no trees that need to come down. So for those reasons, the fact that the stones are going back on the same wall and that there are no trees, we feel that it's been, the openings have been positioned in such a way that you can issue a scenic road permit for it.
Okay.
It's, you know, this is one of the more straightforward things about the development of this property. It's been a very complicated piece of property to develop because it turned out there were some tributaries to the capacity water supply that were close to it. Those don't really bring in the zoning setback under the Situate zoning bylaw, but they do affect where the subject system can go and also I think where the well can go. And then there are wetlands that also affect both of those things. And because there's no public water on this street, apparently there was an offer made to extend public water down the street and the residents just weren't interested. So that's where things stand. So I think it's a good way of dealing with the fact that you're going to have these openings. One of them is temporary, the other one will have the stones reused. And when the motion was put together, there are a lot of call-outs for notifying the planning office when different things are happening so we can go out and take a look at it.
Okay. Yeah?
I'm all set.
There's no change in location for the main?
For the what?
There's no change in location with the exception of the new location for the well?
Yeah, then the driveway opening is in the same spot where you approved it last time.
Is it a little bit larger?
No, 20 feet wide.
Okay.
And was there any thought of bringing the well rig through that opening and moving it down?
Yes. The Board of Health Agent won't sign off on the building permit until the well is drilled and it's proven that the water is adequate pressure and it's clean. So to get the well in the other opening and then maneuver all the way over to the other side, you'd have to clear cut the area, build a road in. And it's just not the most practical way. And the well's going to be drilled much, much sooner than when the house will actually be built.
So you won't be taking the 20 feet out? You'll be taking the 16-foot section out first?
Yeah, take the 16-foot section out.
And you won't have the opening, the other opening open at all?
No.
And do you have to build a road to get to that? Once again, you have to come off of that street.
Yeah, we'll just put some mulch or wood chips down.
Okay.
Rich. So both sections of the wall go back in?
Where's the access to the property? Is that on this, can I see it here or no?
No, not both sections.
The 20-foot section.
That'll be the driveway.
Oh, that is the driveway?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The 16-foot section is to put the well in.
And what we were, last time, we said, "Take those stones and put them over here because there's a gap in the wall."
Right, right, okay. Okay, go ahead.
And just curious, like when you said that there's a chance to reconstruct it a little bit better, I mean, what do you do in that case? I mean, do you like make it a little bit higher or just, like what does that mean, better?
It looks like a tree probably came down on the wall in the past, so the walls, the stones are kind of knocked over.
Okay.
We'll just put it back together neatly.
Is this work done by, you know, like a stonemason or is?
No, they're just, they're just field stones and no masonry. Just stacked stones, loose.
It's a rubble stone wall, isn't it? Yeah.
But is it built with like big foundation stones and then smaller, I mean, is it?
Um, there's, the base stones are fairly large. The ones on top you could probably pick up and, they're heavy obviously, but yeah.
Well, I guess I'd want to see that it gets reconstructed sort of the same way, you know, that it's got, if it's got big foundation stones, that's what it ought to carry through.
Yeah.
It ought to look like you never disturbed it, at least at some level.
Is that something that would be overseen by you? You said in the condition, there was a notification that the planner should be notified when you had certain steps.
Yeah. Let me see.
Inspected before?
Yeah, when the info is completed, maybe the plan, you know, when the info is starting just to show how the construction is going to go and to make sure that's, you know, kind of like a rough, you know, country stone wall as opposed to like a city stone wall.
Right.
It's more about sort of matching the look, so, so you don't end up with, oh, all the big stones got used somewhere else, so we just put a whole bunch of little stones in there, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Usually they put the big ones on the bottom.
Right, and then, yeah, they kind of progressively get smaller to get up.
Yeah, I remember, we had a picture of it. It's probably somewhere in my email of that. And I remember it was pretty, not this current one, but when we were, the first approval, there was a picture of the stone wall. And I remember it being pretty, I don't even say random, but it was a very field stone or organic looking.
Kind of like a historic wall.
Yeah. It wasn't, as Laura put it, it was more of a farm wall as opposed to the city wall or constructed wall, so. Yeah, I would just say to try to keep, match that as best as possible.
Any comments from public? Do we have a motion?
Do you remember when you came in for the hearing? I'm just supposed to see if I can pull up the email.
It was 20, 20?
I don't, about two, three months ago.
February, I think.
So it was all the way back there?
Do you want me to continue or do you want me to wait?
Do you want to look at it first?
I probably won't be able to find it.
You know, it's, all right, the difference would be, think about the issue that we had up on Border Street. And we made them take out, because they had made it circuit half-round. And they constructed a stone wall that was not in keeping with the rubble stone wall that went along Border Street, which is the scenic road. And other than just taking down or adding to one, closing off one driveway side, it looked pretty, it still looks pretty awful, but.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, we want to make sure that's.
That's not going to happen here.
Yeah.
That's not going to happen. I mean, that was a stone wall that was put up with, it came from probably Plymouth Quarries. All right, shall I continue?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. Move to close the Scenic Road Act public hearing and to approve the application for the temporary disturbance of 16 feet of stone wall for installation of a well and permanent removal of 20 linear feet of stone wall in connection with the construction of a proposed 12-foot-wide driveway for a new single-family home on vacant land off Summer Street known as Assessor's Parcel 17-4-28 for applicant, the Stewardia Realty Trust. Stones from the proposed opening will be used to fill the approximate 10-foot-wide opening 25 feet south of the proposed permanent opening. No trees over 3-inch caliber in the scenic road right-of-way will be removed as shown on the plan to accompany scenic road application, Zero Summer Street, parcel 17-4-28 dated 4/10/17, prepared by Morse Engineering Company, Inc. The applicant will notify the planning board when removal of each section of stone wall commences, when infill of the existing opening is started, and when it is completed, when the temporary disturbance is rebuilt, and when the driveway is fully completed, as site inspections may occur. No additional stone wall shall be disturbed for utility installation without another scenic road hearing and permission of the planning board. Detailed color photographs of the stone wall areas of permanent and temporary disturbance are to be provided to the planning office prior to commencement of the work. This approval is conditional on all federal, state, and local permits being obtained for the temporary and permanent work.
I second.
We've got to add a comment that the stones that are going to be relocated are coming from the 20-foot section.
Yes.
I thought that was in there.
That's in there.
Did it?
Yes. Stones from the proposed opening will be used to fill the approximately 10-foot-wide opening 20 feet south of the proposed.
Okay, so it should either be permanent or 20-foot opening so that we know which one going to take the rocks from.
Well, it won't be the temporary one because they're going to back.
Right.
I think he's just saying it should say the permanent 20-foot opening, right?
All right, instead of proposed, permanent opening.
I think also, I know it's not part of your motion, but when we write the letter to the town clerk, it would be good for us to say that Stewardia Realty Trust is responsible for communicating this information to whatever, whatever person buys it and whatever, and they're responsible for communicating to whatever contractors do the work. So that some of this might actually happen as far as the notifications. I mean, you don't have to add that, I'm just saying we can have a letter.
Okay.
Okay.
We need a second.
We need a second as amended?
I'll second as amended.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, we, I guess this is a public meeting date, so we've got 15 minutes. So we have more, some other things here. We have as far as accounting or minutes.
We have two sets of minutes.
Move the minutes of April 13th, 2017. Do you want me to do both?
Yeah, sure.
And the minutes of April 26th, 2017.
They're the same as Senate? I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're done. Any accounting to do tonight?
Hang on. Who are those voices?
Probably his next group.
They look like engineers.
What exactly do engineers look like?
Very official, thanks for marrying him.
Okay. Move to approve the requisition of $435 to Merrill Corporation for Engineering Peer Review for grades changes during construction at 529 to 531 Country Way.
Second?
Second.
You have a second?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, done. Well, is there anything you want to, we got 10 minutes. Want to cover a few things?
Could launch into, to others.
No, that's fine. Let's, just, just kind of as a point of information, we're putting together a, a letter, a joint letter from the planning board in CONCON, just saying how we're going to address the stormwater and the Waterlands Protection Act coordination, including that the stormwater would be addressed through the, through the special permit. And that we might have at least one, if not more, sort of joint meetings with the Conservation Commission. So I think that's the way we kind of fell out is, that's how it ought to be structured, just to make sure it's all sort of coordinated.
If we have a joint meeting with CONCON, you would be in charge of the meeting?
Yeah, I think that's how we do it because the, because we're going to be addressing stormwater in particular, right?
Right.
The fact of the matter is, we're going to address it and then as we go through the rest of the review, if things change, if possible, the stormwater will change again too, right? Because if they reconfigure the lot or whatever, stormwater will have to be redesigned anyway.
Didn't we do something similar with the middle school? We were at the library, do you remember that?
Yeah.
We met at the library with CONCON.
The middle school or public safety, I forget which one.
Maybe it was public safety.
I think it was public safety.
Okay.
Both of them.
Yeah. So that's the game plan for now. We still don't have anything filed, so we're still waiting for the actual filing.
Wasn't there on Monday or something of this week, I saw on something on Facebook that they were presenting again?
They presented last night to what?
They had CONCON last night.
Oh, it was CONCON, okay.
But they haven't filed anything with the planning board yet. What else, Laura?
I did go to the CONCON meeting and it was, it was a big meeting. They were over at the Public Safety Building, which is probably where we're going to have to go. The room held about 75 people. And most of the issues that were brought up had to do with the health aspects, the public health aspects of that site and what was buried there, was there a cancer cluster, you know, that kind of thing. There wasn't really, there was a little bit of discussion about stormwater. And I think it was pretty well established at the meeting that there would be, at least by the Conservation Commission, that there would be a joint review and that planning would be basically, I think, to give a lead on the stormwater.
Okay. Did they, did Toll Brothers address most of the concerns about the materials?
Well, some of them, yes, some of them, but there's a lot of information that needs to be brought into town.
Filed, yeah.
As far as the, some of the reporting from DEP about the closure of the site and, you know, closing the, you know, the contamination that's outstanding. And whether or not they do more sampling and how they do the sampling, there's a lot of things for them to make decisions about.
Okay. So we're waiting. Anything on the zoning reports?
Well, it all sort of culminated with town meeting. So this EDC.
Yeah, everything from the CPC got passed, right?
Yes, right. There was some discussion about certain aspects of it, but it all passed. We don't meet again until the 8th of May. No, yes, the 8th of May, June. The next week is EDC, talking about signage and apparently Tuesday night, the selectmen had interviews for the sister city of Cork. And they have eight people at large along with somebody from the chamber, EDC. I don't know if there's anybody here that wants to get involved in cultural district, et cetera, et cetera, if you all want to be part of that committee, sign up. They're going to Ireland in June, I think. So.
Anybody interested?
What? No, you have to pay for it yourself. It's, I think it's a 10-day schlep, so.
It's a tough time doing the job.
I know, really. I think that's, I have a flyer in my Jeep. And what else did they have? And of course, this chairman of the board, the selectmen resigned.
Yeah, it was in the paper.
It's a list on that.
He, you know, five minutes into the meeting, read a letter. And he's finishing up on June 6th and he's done.
Okay, so, did you already do that?
So that's, I left because, you know, other than doing, what were they doing? Plans for weddings and, you know, permits, special permits for that type of stuff. I said, "Bye."
What's this, the committee that you mentioned, what's the goal of that? I mean, I know that, for instance, we have the sister city with Sosse Engrais or whatever, I don't know how to pronounce it.
It has to do with economics, really, and trade, tourism, that type of thing. Trying to get them to come over here, where to go over there. And they have quite a bustling, West Cork has quite a bustling business area, I guess. Now, I was involved with the luncheon, which was very nice over at the Maritime Center. And after it was over, EDC got the bill.
Well, I guess I was curious because my understanding of the French sister city is it's more of a cultural exchange, like with the students coming over and then back and forth, but it's not so much about business or economic development. At least that's my perception.
Right. But I think this is more about business and economic development, I think. So it's, I mean, we are supposedly the most Irish community in the country.
We are?
Supposedly. Although.
Are they?
Yeah, I would say, I think it fell.
Who's first?
I can't remember which one was on there, but they're third.
Third. And it's continual, it's continuously being diluted.
Sorry.
So, anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, the O'Toole's.
Laura, do you want to, you want to just summarize the meeting we had about stormwater? You know, with, with building department and all that?
Sure, well, actually, let me talk about the meeting since Tricia had wanted to have some kind of a meeting to hash through some of the issues about stormwater. And one of the issues was the one, I think the main one was the one that the planning board has had of whether or not the certificate of occupancy can be linked to stormwater improvements that haven't been made yet. For instance, Blanchard Farm, but there are many other situations. So we had a meeting with, it was basically the development review team. Kevin Cafferty was there, Jen Keefe was there, Bob Vogel, Pat Gavin, Steve and myself. And we all agreed, and Bob Vogel was on board, that it would be okay for the planning board to make a change in its stormwater regulations that would say that we could hold back, we could, yeah, but the certificate of occupancy could be held back if the stormwater improvements weren't complete yet. So that seemed kind of cut and dried, but nothing's ever cut and dried. So in the afternoon, 1 o'clock, we were supposed to have a meeting of department heads that was, you know, about some other things, but we came back to the subject of the certificate of occupancy and the, and the stormwater again. And there was a slightly different cast of characters. Steve wasn't there, Neil Duggan was there, and Tricia was there. And most of the other people were the same, except I think maybe Kevin Cafferty wasn't there. And at this meeting, there was much more of an emphasis on, let's use fines because fines make a more clear statement. The certificate of occupancy is something that's going to affect the innocent property purchaser who, you know, through no fault of their own buys a house that's incomplete and then all of a sudden it's a moving truck and they can't put it anywhere and it's a huge, enormous problem and so on. So we kind of, I think we kind of compromised that we would use both techniques, both the fine and the certificate of occupancy, with no particular information about which one should be used at what time, but just whichever one kind of suited. And then that very afternoon, after the meeting, I get an email from Bob that there's likely to be a certificate of occupancy requested at 704 Country Way, where, you know, you had approved a common driveway. It's the house that was formerly owned by Myron Bullock and that whole, you know, family. So, so I went up there and that was the one with a little antique garage to one side and the common driveway that was going to be to the left-hand side of that. And they were supposed to take the pavement out from the garage, loaned seed, just use that garage in the tool shed because they were getting the common driveway as their main means of access. So I get up there and, you know, find some things that aren't really quite right, primarily that the common driveway, it's been finished graded, but the curb cut hasn't been done. So you would drive up over the curb cut and then go down about four inches where, you know, the base and the pavement of the common driveway are going to go, but they're not there yet. And apparently they didn't have their curb cut request in yet either. So, so that was one problem. And then the homeowners showed up and they're already starting to move their stuff in and so on, which I guess is not that unusual. So they're moving their stuff in and, you know, we're, you know, I thought I better have a little conversation with them. And they said, "Oh, no, no, we're going to park over here and, and we're going to park by the garage." So had to inform them, no, you know, that's really not what the planning board approved. They approved a common driveway and the common driveway is over there and this is part of the work that needs to be done. So, I mean, the main work that really, I think, has to be done is that common driveway has to be done.
Well, I go by that every single day.
But they were moving in, so they already had an occupancy permit?
They did not have an occupancy permit, but they had toothbrushes and whatever.
This is the house, the new one, the new, new house or the new one. And they set it up with the garage, with, you know, the door, the whole bit.
They have a garage door.
Right, right on the street, okay? And it's, it has an entryway into the front yard, to the steps that go into, that's how you enter the house, is from there. And you actually go out back to another porch and a door. It doesn't appear.
They do have a front door.
Yes. Yes, they have, but what I'm saying is the access is from the garage.
That's the way they have it set up?
Yes, and, and then that precludes the common driveway if, because there's no.
Well, unless, you know, unless they, actually, what's going to happen now is the storm is coming and they're not going to do any work then, but Monday morning, they're going to be out there working on the common driveway. Peter is going to be there inspecting. So, you know, the pieces are coming back together. But there were a couple of, you know, kind of mad last-minute phone calls about, you know, what's going on and.
And they did a wonderful job filling that trench.
The grading in the back is also a little off what's on the plan, but this is a situation where Conservation reviewed all the stormwater. So, and hopefully the dry well is in where it's supposed to be. But that's the Conservation on this one.
So we'll take up the discussion about the. So, we'll take up the discussion about the modifications to regs at a later meeting?
Yeah, I think we definitely need to go ahead with that.
I think we should figure that out, yeah.
That's going to be advertised in advance, so that the change in regulation would be talking about the ability to use the certificate of occupancy.
I thought we already had that in there.
There's a certificate of completion that...
Maybe that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, that we, we have to sort of issue, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But it's not tied to the certificate of occupancy. I think that's the difference, right? There's not linkage there.
Okay.
Okay, it's 8 o'clock. Let's continue. We're at a public meeting for Site Plan Administrative Review for 4 Union Street.
This isn't a special permit, Laura?
No. There are really no more site plan special permits, and there's no mixed use, so it's not a mixed-use special permit, it's just a site plan review. But the question, here's some questions about whether it's major or not.
Okay. Are you up, Paul?
Yes, sir.
The camera picks it up over there. The camera's set tonight, so it has to be over there tonight.
Does it have to be perpendicular to our, to the ceiling?
Best go the other way, so...
Has to kind of face that way.
Let's keep moving it so we can pick it up on the camera. Can you pick it up a little bit? That's why I've been, yeah, a little more, a little bit more. Sure. Here you go. Okay.
Thank you. You're up.
My name is Paul Newfield, Ross Engineering Company, representing the advocate for a site plan administrative group, John Helen, who's seated at the...
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, maybe over on the side, can you come up this side?
You're blocking the camera.
Yeah.
You can't see me.
I can see the map.
You're blocking the camera where you're standing, Paul.
I was going to pick this one up.
Right there. Can you come on this side? It's not going to be here.
How's that?
Do this left-handed. Got to be hammering.
The property is located in the 3rd section, it's also bordered by Old Country Way, which runs out to this area here. This is the existing conditions plan. What it shows is the existing structure. It has the existing bays in it for contractors' purposes, and it shows existing parking. There's, we show seven spaces in front and two on Old Country Way. This gray area are the areas of existing parking that currently exist. He's proposing to put an addition on the building that'll be off the end of this building in the area of the existing pavement. And due to the property, the property is in a water resource protection, a water resource protection is a separate zone, it's a Zone A. And the Zone A is from this line down towards the reservoir. So, the majority of the property is outside of Zone A, which is where the work is being conducted. Again, this is the existing structure. These areas in blue are existing infiltrators for the roof runoff that were installed when the building was originally constructed, I think about 12 or 15 years ago. This area here is the proposed addition, which is 48 by 30. It's going to be for two additional bays that will be identical to the bays that are in the existing building. We're adding one more space in the front, and there's an additional...
Looks like three more spaces.
No, actually, we have seven existing spaces here, and so, we're going to add two more in the front, and we're adding...
Well, I see eight, nine, and 10.
We're adding five in the back.
I see eight, nine, and 10. Do I have, is this drawing no longer valid?
That looks out of date. I have eight, nine.
I did, I did.
There's two there, Steve. There was two sets. One was a more updated one.
There is a, I knew what I was got.
It says eight, nine.
This is it.
I'll just look over and look at something. That's just a type here. Ten's over on this side.
The entrance to this area for the project will be over the, the existing curb cut on Old Country Way. We're actually going to narrow it up. There's a small piece of railroad ties here, which is going to be, and the edge of the pavement is going to be pushed in. This is the outline of the proposed pavement. It's what we call a popcorn pavement, and part of that is for stormwater management system to treat the water. There's also a series of natural trailers at this end here, which, which is on the next ride, that'll pick up the, all of the runoff from the roof from the proposed building. There's a snow storage area directly behind the building. There's a small area here that could be used for snow storage as well. The proposed dumpster would be in this existing pavement area. The trucks would come in, pick it up, and back out. Any type of delivery to these, to this building will be similar to what happens now. It's basically a curbside delivery. And the deliveries will only be made off of Union Street. This is all pavement here, and it goes all the way over to the, on the other way side of Union Street. We aren't changing anything in the front of the property, it's for our sidewalks. This is the existing mailbox, which is going to stay in place. This is the new brewery building, and this is the function hall, I guess, for it in front.
Tasting room. The old school. Good brewery building, isn't it? Oh, here's the, here's the schoolhouse here.
Yeah.
These are the recharge units for the roof runoff from the proposed addition. I put these on the board. The architectural features for the proposed building will be identical to this. He's simply going to take this end and extend it over. This is the end view, so the end will be similar to that, and this addition will come out. It's, it's going to stop in this area here, and come straight out. And it's going to have the two doors, two additional doors in the front. So, with all said and done, in front of this building, it will be identical to this one. It's going to match it so it makes the same.
But the access to the, the addition is from the other side?
Pardon?
Coming in the back?
From Union Street.
Why you have parking spaces? So, you're putting parking spaces in front of the roll-up doors, then?
Yes.
Yes. These two parking, we're going to have two spaces here, and we're going to have five spaces in the back. I spoke to the fire chief, oh, I'm sorry, Captain Elliott, on Tuesday, I believe, and he said he'd send a recommendation in. He, he was okay with the pattern in here for being able to get it up to fire, to fire the fire.
Now, would there be doors on the right-hand side? Like where those parking spaces are, where parking space number 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14?
On this side here?
There'll be exit doors.
No, the back, right?
Oh, the back here?
Yeah.
There'll be exit doors in the back, somewhat, if you look at the picture on the front, it's 30 by 68 doors for each unit, so there's a second meter egress. But there won't be overhead doors.
Overhead doors in the same file as all of your jobs?
Correct.
Is there an architectural elevation of this thing?
I don't think there is.
No, we don't feel we need to worry.
Well, that's the existing.
It's existing now, the proposed. The look of the proposed...
No, it's just the existing, right?
Pardon?
All I see is the existing.
Right. What I'm saying is that he's, he's going to take these same features, extend the building, and extend that.
So, how does it, how does it transition? Because it's not as wide as that building. So, how does that look? Where's the drawing that shows what that's going to look like?
What will happen is the building will come out, and just people will be over here more. It's still going to look the same where it comes up.
You're just going to, just going to wing it, or is there, is there a wrong?
Excuse me, same roof pitch, use the same siding that we have now, same overhead doors, carry on the same dormist proportion, and then we'll have the same exit doors that we have now, and the same gable end that you see now will be seen at the end of the new building. We're not proposing any change in the building. It'll be natural shingles, corner boards, again, windows, dormers up the top, be a little lower than the existing, and the scale will be in proportion. Again, we won't be as wide. Existing is 40 feet, the proposed is 30 feet, so we'll scale that down to, again, keep the same roof pitch.
Are you keeping the same roof line?
Uh, no, that will change a little bit, because the, the new building is a little smaller, width-wise, so again, we'll have the same pitch, but the line will be a little different because of the size will be down, so the roof will, the new roof will be a little lower, but on the same...
So, is this building not the same height as the existing garage, then?
Uh, no, it will not be the same height for the peak, because again, it's narrower.
No, I mean, at the, at the eve. Must be below at the eve as well, then?
Yeah, we could, right now, it's 16 feet to the eve. We'll probably be below that by two feet.
What happens to those windows?
What's that?
What happens to those windows?
Those windows will remain. The peak will be close to the bottom side of that. That's why we lowered it a foot. Those are...
No, that won't fit.
No.
I was going to say, yeah.
No, it's going to go away.
They have to go away.
They've got to go.
They have to go. You know what? This is, as far as I'm concerned, with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, as far as I'm concerned, this is a total and complete inadequate submission. And we need to know what this is going to look like. And I understand that it's just, you know, this Site Plan Administrative Review. This is a huge building, and, you know, when you were in here before, it was, this is a maximum use of this property. And it's two bays, for what? What is this for? Is it a warehouse? What is it?
Storage.
Storage for what?
Could be a contractor, or people...
Right. And when I drove by there tonight, when I, excuse me, when I drove by there tonight, there were two big dumpsters out there. And where are those going?
Those are containers that the, the roofer uses now for taking his materials to and from jobs.
I understand. And where are they going?
They usually go on his truck, or they'll be parked in, in the spots.
In those spots.
There's only one spot left here, though.
Right. This is, as far as I'm concerned, this is an incomplete submission.
Well, and interestingly enough, Laura presented us, supplied us with the approval, and one of the conditions I remember reading was, there should be no outside storage of materials.
And there is.
And there is. And I've seen shingles there stacked up.
Yeah, there's deliveries, and they come in. I mean, you can see the pictures there, something, the other day, we took those photos that we showed there. The deliveries, they get put inside the storage at night.
And so, do the shingles, this has nothing to do with who has the shingles, but rather, do they stay there all night?
Yes. The containers?
Yes.
Yes, it's this part of the vehicle, sometimes they're on top of the truck, and sometimes it's delivered to the job.
All these things are going right. I tend to agree with Ann that we should have some elevation, we should have some elevation views of this thing, so we can see what it's really going to look like. It sounds like you're just sort of winging it right now, in terms of how this thing's going to get attached, what it's going to look like. Obviously, the windows have to go away, right? If you, if you're only lowering the peak by two feet.
Well, yeah, I was going to say, if...
All these doors at the bottom have to go.
No, it wasn't the peak that's getting lowered by two feet, it probably be more. The peak will be lower than that. I said, the, the soft height will be lower, so the peak is narrower and lower, so the peak will be lower than that.
If you just take a parallel line of, which is the, the roof pitch, right? And you move, let's say, that line to miss the window, and you keep the same pitch?
You're going to have a three-foot...
Exactly. Your wall is going to be like three foot high, or four foot high.
We also come in 10 feet on one side. It's not the same width that you see there. If you're looking right on the side...
Yeah, no, you're going to be flush to the existing face this way. In order to do that, and be parallel to the existing pitch, but not at the same roof line, you've got to come in, you're going to lose, right?
But, like, here's the roof pitch, right?
Yep.
Let's just say you brought it down to miss that. That's the roof pitch. Even though the ridge might be only right here, this is where it's going to end up, about where the bush is going to be.
Right. You're going to have a three-foot bay.
Really, they're going to miss that window.
Not happening.
So, I don't see how you could actually do what you're proposing to do.
Exactly.
Because, you know, what you're saying is, there's, here's the line, yes, the, the other line would come down would be right here, but to miss that, you still have to have this pitch and this pitch.
And then you're going to put dormers on it.
Don't see how it's going to work.
Well, and let's just play devil's advocate here.
It might be high enough.
If you had to remove those windows, are those egress for the apartments?
No, there are other windows in there that meet the egress. Those aren't required.
And you could very easily put apartments above this, if the roof is up high enough.
That's not our plan right now.
Well, plans change, as we well know.
Well, if I were to do that, I would come back in front of the board and ask for permission.
I, I think that sort of the key issue here is, I just don't see how, what you're proposing is going to work. It, it sounds like if you're two feet, I mean, if you're not at the same face, you're not going to get the height for the, for the doors, and it won't look the same. So, you've got to be at the same, you've got to be flush to the same face. And then, and then how's it look? Because it doesn't match that gable end, right? It's a smaller...
Yeah, I mean, we lose, if you have to lose a window, we, we lose a window. But again, that's, but the idea is to keep, keep the same lines, similar dormers, and same finishes on the outside that we have now.
I guess I'd like to see that on a piece of paper.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we're adding three parking spaces for the, for the use here. We didn't think it required us to go to a, a full-scale drawing, uh, last time. We didn't have any luck with that, but...
One of the things I think...
I just, I don't, I don't see how it, what you've described is going to work.
Right.
And, and it doesn't give us any sense for what the massing is going to look like once you added the addition. So, we're not asking for anything exotic, you know? Things like elevation views and, and, you know, from the front and the side, we ought to...
I mean, as far as the ma, the massing, I mean, it wouldn't be any larger than the building next door would. It'd be actually smaller, and live from the same-sized property with more green space and, and I think a better use, as they say, we're using the existing pavement to put the addition on in that area. We're taking care of a lot of the stormwater issues through the project, cleaning it up that way. We're making it easier to park for people in there as well. And again, we're adding two garage spaces for storage.
Yeah, I'm not even addressing that, it's just, I don't, what you've described, I don't think it's going to work. So, I, I would like to make sure that you've thought it through enough, and we can see a drawing that we say we would approve, right?
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be, like you said, a full set of drawings. In fact, before, when you came before us for the previous proposal, the building that you had, that was submitted, there were some elevations on that, I remember, right?
Similar size.
But they were, they were rough, though. I mean, it wasn't like it was a finished drawing, but it was enough to give us a sense of what that was going to look like. the same face. And then, and then how's it look? Because it doesn't match that gable end, right? It's a smaller...
Yeah, I mean, we lose, if you have to lose a window, we, we lose a window. Uh, but again, that's, but the idea is to keep, keep the same lines, similar dormers, and same finishes on the outside that we have now.
I guess I'd like to see that on a piece of paper.
Yeah, I, I mean, I mean, we're adding three parking spaces for the, for the use here. We didn't think it required us to go to a, a full-scale drawing last time. We didn't have any luck with that, but...
One of the things I think...
I just, I don't, I don't see how it, what you've described is going to work.
Right.
And, and it doesn't give us any sense for what the massing is going to look like once you've added the addition. So we're not asking for anything exotic, you know?
Well, I mean...
Things like elevation views and, and, you know, from the front and the side, we ought to...
I mean, as far as the ma, the, the massing, I mean, it wouldn't be any larger than the building next door would. It'd be actually smaller, and live from the same-sized property with more green space and, and I think a better use, as they say, we're using the existing pavement to put the addition on in that area. We're taking care of a lot of the stormwater issues through the project and cleaning it up that way. We're making it easier to park for people in there as well. And again, we're adding two garage spaces for storage.
Yeah, I'm not even addressing that. It's just, I don't, what you've described, I don't think it's gonna work. So I, I would like to make sure that you've thought it through enough, and we can see a drawing that we say we would approve, right?
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be, like you said, a full set of drawings. In fact, before, when you came before us for the previous proposal, the building that you had, um, that was submitted, there were some elevations on that, I remember, right?
Similar size.
They were, they were rough, though. I mean, it wasn't like it was a finished drawing, but it was enough to give us a sense of what that was going to look like. Am I wrong? Was it, were there four dogs?
Yeah, I mean, they were finished drawings.
They were? Okay.
So, yeah. And then we changed them, you know, in the design review process a couple times, too. So it was caused, you know, again, we're, uh, at least, you know, is, is the site going to be acceptable? I, I just don't want to spend, it's not, it's not a few hundred dollars for the drawings to be done. It's thousands of dollars. You know, when he does a drawing, it's like, we've submitted to the building department, we address the sprinkler systems gotta be in there, exit signs, emergency lighting, all those things, egresses, they're all in on the, on the project. So in order to put that kind of money upfront, to spend it on, on this, they'll all be met, but, uh, we're kind of putting, if we can't, if the project plan-wise isn't going to be approved, we're doing the drawing for nothing. That's, that's the reason why. That's why, as they say, we're kind of match what's there. I know when, this was years ago, but this, this building, we didn't even have a site plan. We gave it to him, we just said, well, just a drawing of where it's going to go on the property. Uh, but...
And that was 2001, right?
I believe so, yes. We did have a site plan, that, the site plans came when I submitted it to the building department for approval, uh, as part of the permit.
Well, you know, what times have changed.
Yes, I realize that.
And Greenbush is changing, and the brewery has yet to be landscaped, but actually will be a stunning addition to Greenbush. Absolutely stunning. I have a real problem with the massing of this building, and I, for one, cannot support the size and the scope of this building. Two more garages for storage, the storage around the corner on Ford Place. It's just getting to, plus, there's no sense of what's going on here. And people are storing stuff outside, things aren't as they should be. I cannot support this. I'm, I cannot support the site for any type of building.
I think it raises the question is, what, what is the existing conditions underground? Because what we're finding out, at least I found out, is that what I thought is a one-bedroom apartment is now a two-bedroom apartment. So I'm just wondering what, what the actual conditions are, and does it comply to the existing special permit? Because what we're showing is use, we're showing a rectangle on the ground, sitting there saying this is the existing structure, but I'm not confident that I know exactly how that existing structure's being used.
Well, the parking requirements spell that out. The parking requirements tell you what the parking requirements are for the commercial use plus the apartments. Um, there's, there's nine existing parking spaces.
Well, let me ask, let me ask the question different. Let's not talk about where they're gonna park.
I get this, but there's seven for the commercial building, and there's two for the apartments, which is required in zoning by law.
Yeah, but how do I, how do I know how many bedrooms there are in the apartment? What I thought was one now is two.
There's, there's one person in each apartment.
It is advertised as a two-bedroom apartment.
There, there's one person in each apartment. There's a loft room there that's, has a wide opening.
But the bylaw requires for parking for apartments is one space per apartment. It doesn't say one space per bedroom. It says one space per apartment. He has two, he has two apartments up there, there's two spaces for it. We, we actually have four more spaces than what's required in this proposal.
I think that's not correct. It says residential except single or two family lines, which is, is not one space per bedroom. So if there are two bedrooms out there, it should...
Are there two bedrooms?
There's one bedroom in each, and another large room.
So why is it advertised as a two-bedroom then?
They, as they say, they rented, there's one person in each apartment.
They are advertising it as two bedrooms.
I think the real estate done that, but there's one person in each apartment.
Real estate agent did it again?
What's that?
They said the real estate agent did it again.
Well, I think for us to, as the rest of the members of the, the board here say, for us to kind of look holistically at this entire thing, like we said before, right? I, I would need like some elevations or a specific, um, use also, what this is like another contractor bay?
Also not a war, right? We need to know what the use is.
Yeah. So the use, and then some elevations, um, you know, I'll go on record, I may be a little bit different than Ann. I just want to commend you. I think it's a much better proposal than the previous one. The previous one was way too big, and it was not going to fit on that spa, that, that lot, I feel. So this is, at least, you've, you've tried to compromise, make it a, a smaller addition. However, I just don't see how the addition's gonna work in what you've described, without removing two of those windows on the side. So that will impact the look of that elevation, because it won't have any windows, or maybe there will be windows on the elevation, I don't know, um, what that's gonna look like. So...
Are there any general site concerns that we have now, aside from the look and fit of the building?
Let's just get into other questions and things we have here. Um, so this is the first time I've actually seen this drawing, so this is a change, huh? So, um, where does the, talk about this stormwater management, where's the water going?
There's, um, two different areas where you're supposed to add.
Pressure.
One is at the end of the building.
These recharges. What are they picking up?
They run off from the building.
So they're picking up rain leaders on the end of the addition?
This, this area here fits a lot of runoff from the roof area.
From the new addition.
From the new addition.
Yep.
The, the existing building already has four, then, on the side, where the parking is in the back of the building. All this paved area is what we call popcorn pavement, which is a pervious pavement, and that's, that's going to take the water and recharge it and also treat it. This has been reviewed by your, by Peter Tommery-Garrett, and he drew this, and he reviewed these changes as well.
So where does the water underneath the pavement go?
Coming down. Similar to what's happening over here.
So it's like a, it's like a crushed stone kind of finish or something?
No, it's a pavement, but it's...
No, no, I don't mean the pavement. I mean below, below, it's gonna go through the pavement, right?
There's details with a, there's a series of pipes, there's a series of different stone layers for different variations.
Do the pipes go somewhere, or is it just perforated pipe?
It's just perforated, it just leaches in and around.
So it's just leaching right there?
Test pits out here, this is all sandy gravel. This, this whole...
Where's groundwater?
Just so you know, this whole area here is completely filled with infiltrators.
I think it should be a major. I think it should be a major.
It's all going into the same soil.
So how high is groundwater compared to where, that cross-section?
This is above the groundwater. We, we have a test pit in this area here that we dug, and we've been using that. Um, I think that's in the drainage report, but, but the bottom of the system is, the bottom of this is above the high ground, which is the high groundwater is required.
So it has the, it has the required distance between the bottom of that and the top of groundwater?
Yeah.
And how do you plan to maintain the, the asphalt?
Well, it has to be swept. There's an operation, a maintenance schedule goes with that. Typically, what you do is a screen, like a street sweeper, to take any fines you can in it.
I think it's actually needs to be vacuumed, not swept.
I'm sorry, vacuum.
Right?
It is vacuum.
And how would you manage the, the wintertime with it?
Um...
Can't put any sand on it.
You could spray it with a ball.
No, I mean, we're obviously gonna have to plow that stuff, right?
Yeah.
Can't put any sand on it, kind of, what kind of, um...
You could use a liquid salt.
What kind of material is it?
I don't know. I mean, you wouldn't put sand on it for obvious reasons. They'd just fill the voids up. It's a relatively small area, and they could probably just put some salt on it. I mean, the driveway is relatively flat, you wouldn't have to worry about cars skidding off and things like that. Plus, we have a small storage area here, and there's another area right here for it as well. If there's any excess snow, it would be taken off-site.
So that ice melt you would use would not have chlorides in it?
Generally, now, we don't, on the asphalt, we have the, I don't use ice melt. We plow it and, you know, scrape it down by hand when we have to. Uh, so I probably, to be honest, we avoid using the ice melt. I use it around the rocks a little bit, and that gets people out to the pavement.
Well, we would probably want to put a limitation on what kind of ice melt you used in any event.
Yeah, as they say on the driveway...
You don't want to have chlorides in it.
Yeah, we won't be using it. As they say, we haven't filled, we haven't, so I don't anticipate changing that.
So, um, tell us what the use is.
It'd be storage base.
What, what's going to be stored in it?
Uh, could be a plumber with his plumbing supplies, um, you know.
What kind of hazardous materials?
I don't think there'd be any in there. It'd be a sprinkled building, so anything hazardous would be stored where it's appropriate. Propane wouldn't be stored there, has to be stored outside.
I'm more worried about spilling chemicals.
No.
Storage place that somebody doesn't go in much.
Yeah, no...
When you say storage, I mean, do you mean that these would be rented as a contractor's space?
No, a place for, as they say, they might store their equipment, not work out of. So it wouldn't be a space that they would, uh, as they have got tenants lined up, I've had interest from a, a local plumber that is looking for a place.
So you would rent them out as storage?
Yes, so he'd put his stock, trade, he'd be taking to the job, water heater.
Right. But let's just, uh, use as an example, is it, is it Devlin Roofing? So that's the name that's there now? So it'd be, like, they just use that area for storage, or they work out of there, right? That's their base?
No, they use it for storage mostly. They load up their equipment and stuff in the morning, and load it back in the afternoon. They're not working, working there physically.
Okay. So that would be, you envision these two, there's going to be two contractor's spaces?
Right.
In this new addition. Those would both be rented to very similar businesses that are there now.
Right.
Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it could, could, as they say, a plumber or someone, electrician, someone who wants to store some, uh, things in that, probably not another roofer because they're too close to each other, but...
And how, are there three right now existing?
Uh, yes, uh, Devlin has two of the bays, and I, I have the third.
Okay.
The other issue I see in terms of the two parking spaces in front of the proposed addition, and you're putting in two bays, that there is no access really to the second bay. There's no parking in front of it. So, um...
Parking back there. You could park in back, but he's got a door going on in that bay.
You, you just said, I think, that there were no doors going on the back of the building.
No, I said there'd be egress doors on the back of the building.
But if you are...
The overhead doors.
But if you wanted to load stuff, there's no access.
Yeah, I think he, I, well, I think he get it.
Yeah, there is. There is access. This is the curb right here. This is the dumpster. You'd have a bay door here, and probably one in this area here. He'd clearly come in and access that door for drop-offs, for storage. You'd also park a trailer with him, that really parks.
I have to say, the dumpster I saw in there today was much longer than that one that's shown there.
And there were two of them.
And there were two of them, yeah.
Yep.
Well, and I guess, there's a question maybe for Laura, too, here, is that the original spaces, one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven, those were approved, because those are also spaces that are in front of the bays as well.
They're definitely not blind.
Was that approved in the original?
Yeah, I believe that's how, actually, I should go back and look at the original site plan, but, um, it was always intended as like, like garage, like garages for contractors to bring their vehicles in.
Okay.
I know in the wintertime, I'll, I'll pull one of my vehicles in the garage, and Paul will do the same for one of his vehicles, you know, depending on the snow.
And that existing building, the parking, is not just in front of the bays?
Oh, yeah. Well, I know there's parking in the back for the apartments.
No, there's, there's hardly any parking. People using this building could also park in here. If you go out there today, you'll see vehicles parked here for the work, and that work out of here.
So what happens?
So now you're eliminating all that.
Yeah, what happens when you eliminate all that?
No, no. These pieces are down. They put these pieces over here. We only need 10 spaces for this project. We have 14.
So, so I'm just going back to my original question, which is, the dumpster you show there is a tiny little dumpster. The dumpster I saw over there today, there were two of them, and they looked like they were 30 feet long or whatever.
No, those, those are storage containers. If he, if you look, look at those closely, the front of him has toolbox in there that he keeps his equipment in. Then the back opens, he can put debris in, or he could carry shit.
They were right there.
They carry shingles over in front of his building, like a storage container.
So where is he gonna put them?
He puts, he usually has them on, one on top of his truck, and they'll deliver them to the job site, like with a trailer or another piece of equipment.
So why are they sitting there now?
He must have brought them home today. So occasionally, they'll be there, and then they'll take them off to the job site.
Well, they can't be there now. If you build this thing, you can't obstruct the, the access, right? So is he prepared not to bring them on-site?
Yeah, he could keep them at, at his job sites there. He's gotten rid of one, so he's only down to two now. But again, therefore, his use, they're not, he doesn't haul trash or do anything else with that, just for his business.
It just looks like where it is now, it's gonna be in the way of getting into that, what is that, the, the westernmost bay?
Yeah, the bay, the bay door will probably off, offset a little bit, so it won't be at the very end of the building, uh, because it's, in the 48 feet, there's probably 24 feet, so the 12-foot bay will be offset, you know, near one, near the center of the bay rather than, than the end. So that's why we thought we'd get that in there.
You were asking about the original parking?
Mm-hmm.
Um, there are actually only two parking spaces shown, and those are in that kind of large paved area off to the right, um...
Where the addition is gonna be, right?
Um, in front of where the addition would be. You're going like, um, like kind of parallel to the building. Maybe I just have to show you. It's like this. This was all gonna be a driveway to reach all of those separate units, and these were gonna be, you know, something to put them on, like a foyer or something.
It's not for the service.
They were going this way.
Parking through the apartments.
Yep.
This was before the apartments, because he got the apartments a little bit later, a couple of months later.
So, yeah, there was just two driveway, or a driveway and then overhead door?
This was originally permitted as what was termed a carpenter's shop, and, um, the way that was, that came about, I think, was that, I think it was always gonna be a contractor's yard, but a carpenter's shop was the use that was allowed.
Mm-hmm. So, uh...
So I think it's, it's a little on the borderline between the commercial zoning district and the business district. Um, so, you know, I think that's another piece of this.
Mm-hmm. So like, for instance, a plumber contractor, like he was proposing, would that fall under? That'd be something different?
No, that would be the same use as a carpentry.
Well, um, I mean...
Drop a carpentry.
You could call something by any kind of thing you want to call it, but if it's a contractor, you know, I think you have to look at, what does the zoning by law say, and what's like the common sense meaning of it? And if it says contractor's yard, not allowed in business district, only allowed in commercial district, then, you know, maybe if this is where you want to go, maybe you make a judgment, okay, well, we've kind of gone towards that commercial district so far, but you don't necessarily have to expand it. So, I mean, I'm just putting that out there as something to think about.
And that's my whole point. This does not need to be expanded.
Because it's not meeting the existing conditions of what it was supposed to.
Right. And also, too, it is an overuse of that particular corner. Right, and also too, it is an overuse of that particular corner. And I, I just think it doesn't, it doesn't fit regardless.
As far as uses too, it's a shop of carpentry, cabinet maker, electrician, job printer, painter, paper hanger, plumber, sign painter and upholsterer. That's S in the use categories. That's, you know, that was originally what we, um, you know, we submitted and. You know, the demand, I mean, there's, as far as in the business area, there's a demand for this type of stuff. There's no, where do people go? They can't bring it on the abs. You get stuff to be at home with the stuff now too. Uh, so this is one of the reasons we're adding a couple of bays here for that, for that need. And we're trying to get the parking met and trying to maintain the, I realize we're kind of, I don't know, penalize is the right word, but because we're, we're in the business, but, you know, you know, we've got a 146-foot building next door to us. Part of it's metal. We're trying to keep a little bit of residential look with the dorm as the wooden building and hold on to some of that, but we're still in the business and we have a use to, to carry out there that we're trying to do as well.
Yeah, we're applying just to have, the use of this proposed building is identical to what's there now, which was allowed and permitted back in 2001. John's not changing that. The zoning bylaw does allow the proposed use to be in this district. So the use of this building is clearly in keeping with the zoning bylaw. As far as the mass of this building?
I'd be worried about the uses.
Pardon?
I would be worried about the storage of materials, particularly that could spill so close to the zone A.
My narrative, Steve, that I wrote, um, which is required in your bylaw, I stated that there'd be no storage hazardous materials on site. They're not allowed in the zoning district to begin with. So your, your concern has already been addressed by that in the zoning bylaw. That, that was changed several years ago when they came up with an extensive list. Um, and changes as far as uses in the water resource district.
So then we couldn't put a paint shop here then?
Pardon?
Then we couldn't put a paint shop here?
I think they can't.
Thought I just heard you say paint shop.
No, paint, they can't spray paint. You know, they can't paint in the building.
No, I.
I, I think it says in here, it says.
Turpentine and all that kind of stuff here.
Yeah, well, that's normal household as, as those, they're, it's, it's not a matter of, uh, them working there. It says painter.
Commercial painter is a different one, it's buying five gallon drugs, right? Different, it's a different animal. We're talking about commercial, we're not talking about residential, right?
Yeah, I, as I say, I think it, it says painter right in it, but again, as far as storage of hazard material, we haven't had any stored there and we don't plan on, we keep planning on continuing not having any storage of hazard materials.
Laura, did you have, um, did water resources look at this?
They did, um, they had some questions about where the zone A was and they had some, um, concerns about the TSS removal percent. Uh, because, uh, they didn't see that the 90% had been achieved.
I believe that's where it's.
Does this mean that they can't do that?
Okay.
You're in zone A.
Well, you have, you do have a portion against A.
In fact, you've actually got.
But we don't really work in zone A.
You're reading that natural.
Zone A is, is the lower half of the, of the.
Looks like you're putting the drainage tanks in zone A.
No, that's actually, we're just outside of that. It's close, but.
I'm looking at a line that goes right halfway through it.
Oh, that's an existing, that's an existing condition. The lawn is existing, and that's going to.
The lawn's existing, but the new tanks.
The new tanks aren't.
The recharge tanks underneath, what you proposed there, and you're drawing.
These are in zone A.
And you're drawing from the one before.
What Laura's talking about is 90% TSS removal.
I get that.
For buildings.
I understand that.
Parking inside zone A. None of those features are in zone A.
The drainage tanks are in zone A.
You have your recharge and your treatment system in zone A, but you can't have the uses in the zone A. So the parking in the building, that's all outside of zone A. And maybe one small corner of that infiltrator is in it. If we had to move it for some reason, I could move that out of that area.
Laura, did, um, did the water resources commission get answers or they still have open questions?
They, they did have a question about the.
Oh, I think they just answered it.
A consulting engineer is here.
Yes.
Yeah, I bet the report.
The total suspended solids removal. And, um, the initial plan we looked at, um, the zone line wasn't on there, I don't believe. Um, I'm not quite sure, is it the lower end that is not in it?
It's the, no, the, the lower, the, um.
I'm sorry, did you just say that the plan that you looked at is not this plan?
No, the original, I looked at this plan in my subsequent review, which I just submitted. On the original review, I don't think it was on there, but.
The low half.
Okay, so if it's this half, um, it would seem to be that, now, is the zone A, is that the, the water resource protection line? Im location point?
Well, there's the water resource protection district.
Well, see, there's a zone A and there's a aqua for, or wetlands protection dis, I mean, water resource protection district, which I think are different.
Yes.
There's a zone A on its property.
There's a zone A and a water resource protection, all right, so the 90%, my reading applies to the whole zone, not just the zone A. Um, in which case, the 90% would be required. Now, according to the Stormwater Management Act, the state act, um, for something like this, which could be considered a redevelopment, you have to meet it to maximum extent practical. Again, that's the state Stormwater Management Act. I'm not sure if it applies to the zoning bylaw, quite honestly. Um, I think that's up to the, um, the planning board in town. But basically, their weighted, um, TSS removal for the new work is at 87%. Um, 80% being what's required not in the water resource protection district, 90% being required in the water resource protection district.
And, well, what about the zone A?
The zone A is part of the water resource protection district.
Yeah, but it's, there's more stringent controls over it, right?
Exactly, yes.
So, so are you, are you saying the design as it exists today, with bringing the roof leader recharge into zone A is okay?
Um, well, the roof, roof leaders, roof runoff is considered quote-unquote clean water. Kind of roofing material. If it's a metallic roof, it is not. If it is a rubberized roof, um, it is considered clean and doesn't have to meet the TSS removal.
Okay.
So, so the recharge for the roof would be okay?
Yeah.
The question is whether the 80% provided by the porous pavement meets the criteria of 90% in the water resource protection district.
And I think what I saw was it was 80%.
It's 80 for the porous.
Right.
Now, when I said 87, it was a weighted average of the, you know, percentage of the roof and 180% for the pavement. And so based on the areas and, and that removal rate, you come up with a weighted of 87%.
And it looks like there's only really a tiny bit of the, the new pavement that would be on, in the zone A, but then that applies to the whole site, is what you're saying?
I think the point of question is.
Water resource district.
Yeah, the, the whole site, I, I believe is in the water resource protection.
Yeah, it is.
So the zone A is a component of that.
Yeah, that's a, that's a.
What's a stricter requirement.
That's for surface water.
Okay.
So it has to meet the, the water resources, and so that's why, how you got to the 90%?
Well, that's how I said that it's really a question for the planning board, because it, again, if we were going by the state stormwater policy, um, regulations, this would meet it. However, since the, it's a zoning bylaw, 90%, the question is, is there latitude for the board to ever go along with that? Based on the fact that it's a, an addition to a pre-existing use? And I don't know that answer.
Um, anything else?
Um, yeah, there was, well, one of the, the other thing was the architectural plans that I, and I think we've already discussed that. The other question I had was the requirement for handicap access. Um, the state law, which is the Architectural Barriers Board, doesn't require any handicap spaces for anything less than 15 parking spaces. The ADA requirements, any parking spaces, you need to provide at least one, um, handicap accessible space. So, I mean, personally, we always go with the ADA requirements, um, just because it's the more stringent and it kind of makes sense.
Okay.
So those were the, those were the outstanding issues we had.
Great, thank you.
Steve, well, all over on these should be drainage. Is this thing with the 90% recording the paint pump?
No, I was looking, I'm looking for it and.
I looked for the bylaw.
I've seen it, but I'm, I'm not able to find it now. I'm not sure it's in zoning or some other situation.
It's in zoning. It is in zoning.
Do you know what section it's in?
I don't have it.
Okay, I've, I've seen it in here before.
It is good, you have to really hunt for it.
I, I've seen it in there before. It's 80% everywhere else and it's 90% in the water resource.
Here, take mine.
Steve, this is, this is a point of, I just got a question. On the site plan next door, when you did the, um, the one for the brewery, Peter mentioned that the roof runoff from metal roofs is not clean water? That this is not a metal roof, so the water is clean, but do you know if that project must have 90%? And the reason I mentioned that is, on this site here, we have, we have quite a bit of open space. This is all open space in here, is about 40 to 45%. I, when, uh, when you look at these planes, which we looked at, there's about 3 or 4% open space. So the majority of this is pavement. It's pavement roof area. If, if this is zone A and the whole thing's in the water resource district, um, my question is, did this project have to meet 90% when they came before the board for a site plan approval?
I don't remember off the top of my head. I, I do remember spending some time on the, uh, on the stormwater drainage, but.
I think it did. They had tri-box filters and infiltrations.
Yeah.
I think they did need the 90%.
Yeah, I mean, there's too many of them to go around to remember all the details here.
Another quick question on the parking is, let's just say again, for devil's advocate, that there are three spaces needed for the apartments, one per bedroom. We'll assume, since it was advertised as a two-bedroom, which three are earmarked or dedicated toward the apartments?
Uh, the new ones, if you look, uh, uh, it would sort of be, uh, like 10, 11, 12, 3.
So 10, 11, and 12.
That would put it closer to the apartment entrance, that's why I would.
Okay.
Put them that, that, that direction. And right, right now, the first floor building is handicap accessible. Uh, there is a handicap bathroom there as well, ADA compliant. So again, the, any, any work on the, you know, the, the roots would be applied as well.
So for the, the two, the contractor bays, you really have, you have one, two, then three, four, like four spaces, right? So you'd have eight and nine, and then you'd have 13 and 14. From what you just said, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and then. Look at parking too. And the fire department, what, how, how is this, um, required to be, is it required to be sprinkled?
Uh, no, it, it isn't, but the existing building is. So I'd be, uh, the sprinkler system's already in place. Uh, there's a suction pipe out there, so we're going to extend that to the, to this building as well. What proposed to.
They did say they were going to.
Yeah, we told them we would.
The fire protection looked adequate as far as access, but they did want to look at sprinkling the whole building.
Yeah, the existing building is sprinkled. Now we're going to continue that on.
Okay. So, and there's no other, what's the lighting look like on this thing?
Uh, I think you might see it in the picture you have. There, but the kind of a down lighting.
Down lighting one here, there, and that.
I guess that's this right here.
So, um, how, how, um, how shielded is that?
Uh, I think you might see some of the existing ones on here now too. If you look closely above those doors, uh, they're kind of made to go down lighting. They were similar ones that were approved last time, right?
Yep, they changed this in 2000.
Isn't that time.
Oh, you're, you're talking about something else though, right? These are, where are these with respect to like, are they up here?
Uh, those, again, those, those lights are just general lights for the building. Not maybe on the side for people walking here. Another one on the side for people walking, one on the back for people walking.
But do you have any, um, existing similar ones?
Yeah, so these are existing ones right here.
These are just at the doors.
Yep, and that's, that's the general label used, not back, similar ones that. And they're, they're kind of shielded on the top, uh, so they tend to go down towards the ground. It might be hard to see on there, but, uh, that's a.
Okay, so you don't look like they're shielded, but. Any questions at this point?
I've said what I need to say.
Anybody else?
Well, I mean, I guess discussion amongst us, I mean, I feel like.
Let me just see if there are any questions.
Okay, sure.
From Public. Hearing none? All right.
Well, there is one, Mr. Public.
Yes.
Public Steve B. Orklin, 38 last way. I just want to say, just in general, this district, I think you guys just approved a full new building over on like Ford's Way or something like that, which was basically a contractor's type of yard. These electricians, the plumbers, the havoc guys, as you know, when the train came in, they had nowhere to go. So a lot of these guys left town. So an addition like this on this building in this area is exactly what zoning is in that area. When they talk about the uses and Laura said, well, a paint shop might not be allowed, John read the pink, it was, it was on the list of allowable uses. Well, there's one table for allowable uses in the zoning bylaw, then there's restricted uses in the water resource protection district. So whatever use he's going to have inside the building has to meet both of those. Otherwise, he's in violation of zoning. So just in general, this is, you should look at this favorably. I mean, I'm, I'm in the contracting business myself. We need spaces like this and they're hard to come by. This is the spot to put them. It's what it's zoned for. Please look favorably on what he's trying to do as long as he needs the bylaw.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. We have any, any other questions or comments?
It seems to me, and this is just sort of, I think where I am at this point, is that, um, we've got some answers to certain things. I still am not comfortable that we know what this thing is going to look like, um, from an architectural perspective, from the elimination of windows, from the footprint of the actual building and what it's going to look like. Um, I heard three different ideas today. Um, so I would want to see that to make any decision on this. Um, there are, there are some, still some open issues. Um, I want to make sure we've got the parking thing squared away, know what the parking is. Um, so it seems to me there's still a few open issues and, and in particular, I'd like to see what this thing's going to look like, right? And, and every description of how you're going to build this, I don't get it, right? And, and I would rather see it on a piece of paper than just have you tell me it's, well, it's going to be this and then it's going to be that, because I heard three, three descriptions of it today. Um, so I'd like to see what it's going to look like on elevation view. Can we see what it's going to look like where the bays are? And how the bays are going to fit in there and how much access you're going to have compared to where you're storing your dumpsters and all that kind of stuff. Um, I just, I don't think we've seen enough of what you actually plan to do here. So that would be my, sort of my sense on it at this point. I, I'm not necessarily saying it's good or bad, one way or the other. Um, I, I'd like to, I'd like to see what it's really going to look like. Um, and I feel like the way you described it, you're going to have about a, a four-foot-high bay for people to get into.
No, that's, that's not it. Right, we, we, if we have to get rid of a window, we get rid of a window, but no, it's not going to be a four-foot-high bay. It will be at scale. If we have some directions here tonight with the, you know, with. directions here tonight with the, you know, again, maintain the same type of siding, same type of doorway, same roof pitch, same doors, you know, moving in that direction, we can design that now that we have that information. If the site plan is going to change, and we have to move the building and stuff like that, we can't, that's what, if we get that answered today, too, if you guys, if the parking, if there were questions there, we could address them, we can bring them back to you and get that answered as well.
Let's get the parking answered. Let's get, I mean, we're not designing this thing.
No, but I, yeah, I realize.
We are, and I'd like to see what you plan to do for what you've asked for. I understand it costs a little money to do that, but that's the nature of the beast, right? And then I would also like to know, just looking at those parking spaces, if we've looked at how you get in and out of those parking spaces. It looks a little tight to me. The turning radiuses there don't look very good to me.
Which ones now?
In the back.
The new ones.
The new ones in the back, right?
Yeah, I believe.
Look really tight.
They've got a 20-foot aisle there. What they do is back out, make one turn and come straight out.
What's stopping them on the property line? Is there a wall there?
Fence.
There is a fence, yeah. Okay, it looks really tight.
Well, aisles are usually 24 feet, 22 to 24 feet for two-way traffic. You've got a 20-foot aisle there for one-way. It's more than enough room to back out and turn and come out.
So you'd back up like this.
We showed the dimensions, 20 feet for the aisle.
That looks tough.
That was something the fire department looked at and thought.
Yeah, I think what we're saying is like, I get it for 11, 12, 13, and 14, but 10 to back out looks pretty tight, based on these drawings. Because it's not, Paul, at the very end, the little turning or the bump out, I call it backing up portion, is not 20 feet, I don't think, at that point. That looks a lot smaller.
Yep.
Yeah, we have to put a radius.
10 is going to be hard.
We could put a radius on that to make the turn.
Because when they back out, they'll back out halfway before they turn. All that's missing is a radius there.
I don't know, they might.
You may even extend it all the way.
They might need more, just from going back that way, too.
We can fix that.
I see two places for snow storage. What's that all about?
That was one of the requests from the engineer as to where we're going to put the snow on site. So we just gave it some free space and some impervious space there again, just for management to have it given place to put.
So you're going to plow it instead of curb?
Probably go straight back there and then.
Instead of curb?
Is it burn? Is it gate fat burn? There's no words for it.
Some winters are an issue. You know, two winters ago, when it kept on snow, you know, usually we'd have a backhoe come in and push it a little farther or remove from the site.
Do we have other items on the list? And we need to resolve the stormwater TSS issue, right? I think we're thinking it's 90%. So we need to confirm that, and if it is, we need to know how you're going to hit it.
We're at 87% now?
It's actually within the subdivision regulations, but, you know, we do miss some of those standards.
Is that in the zoning sub?
No.
And then I'd like you to make sure you circle back with the Water Resources Commission. If they've got open questions, I don't want you to answer them to me. I want you to talk to the Water Resources Commission, make sure they get responses for whatever they've got on the table. Because I'd like to hear back from them that they're satisfied with the...
Now, would the, would the 90% be required then, if it's in the subdivision? Or is it in the subdivision?
Well, it's in the subdivision regulations, just for the Water Resource Protection District. So they are trying to focus on that. And there's really a lot you're going to have to deal with in the Water Resource Protection District, even under zoning. I mean, it does specify that you can't have a paint shop, you know, there, you can't have furniture stripping. I mean, there are quite a number of things that you can't do. Not that, you know, there's any desire to overly be restrictive. It's just because it's in the Water Resource Protection District.
And very close to the Zone A as well. But I think if you want to address that with the Water Resources Commission, we will probably listen to their professional opinion there, so.
I have an additional question. I just noticed on the, since we don't have an elevation, on this picture, the hedge is obstructing it, but it looks like there's a 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 openings on the elevation that's facing Old Country Way. Are those windows or are those doors?
Oh, those are, let's see.
Looks like there's a door, because there's a light over it.
Yep, there's 2 doors and 2 windows.
Oh, there's 3. I see 3 windows.
There's 3, yeah.
Oh, 3 windows, yeah.
So all of those would have to be removed, maybe except for that last window, right? Or even that?
The last window would stay, the 2 windows would be removed, doors would stay, we'd enter through them. One is a sprinkler room and one is a, another means the egress.
One's a sprinkler room?
Yes, because the building's sprinkler, there's a separate main coming in from the street with a hose access for the fire department outside the wall there, as well as sprinkled the existing building. So that's where the sprinkler room is. Fire department has a knockbox to get into that room if they have to.
You're covering that up with the addition.
No, there would be access to that, be another door in the front. Again, it would move the door, but the access would remain to that room.
They did raise that issue, though, if they wanted.
So the access would be, you'd put a new door in the front?
We'd address it somehow, either a door just aside to walk into it, but.
All that can be on your elevation views.
Are you going to take the wall down between the proposed addition and the existing building?
No.
So you're putting a handicap bathroom in this particular addition?
No, it's already in the.
I thought that the existing building had the handicapped access.
It does.
But you're not taking the wall down, so it's not open from one spot to the other?
It's open from the exterior of the building to all the tenants.
From the?
Yes. You go in the exterior door and there's a bathroom, handicap bathroom in the back.
Which door is that?
What's that?
Which door is that?
It's around the backside.
Oh, it's on, it's on the backside.
So in other words, if somebody needs to use the handicap facility, they have to go outside and then go back in again? Is that what you're saying?
That meets the code, yep. Again, where you've got the units in there, you can't cut through a bunch of units to get to the bathroom, so to a garage or gas station. You go outside for the different plans that are used. So that's why we have it out there.
So whoever uses theoretically this proposed addition would have to schlep all the way down to the end of the other building. Is that correct?
Not the end. It's more towards the existing end of the building. Yeah, so it would be in the middle of the new, the total building.
Thank you.
I think also in terms of parking, the other thing you need to find is a handicap parking space.
Well, I think we could certainly add one, but right now, we have 14 spaces. If you, 15 is what generates it, but if there's that space where the snow storage is, it's going to always be a handicap, but I'll check with Paul on that.
We're living by the ADA, so we should have a handicap parking space here somewhere. And you can take one of them, make them a handicap, but.
Well, if the bathroom, maybe 10, sorry, 10 or 11, because that would be.
The handicap space, does it end up being wider?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's about a space and a half with.
Those were the things on my list. You guys have anything else?
So, yeah, I just want to make a statement that in general, conceptually, I agree with Mr. Bjorklund in the sense that I think that if done correctly, and we had, we make sure that we dot all of our i's and cross our t's and everything's addressed, then at least I would support it as for the use that it's supposed to be, as far as a contractor shop. And I will say that I agree, though, with the Steve members of the board, that we definitely have to have elevations and to understand what it's going to look like. And potentially, again, this is my personal opinion, not the board's, you know, that's not the most exciting elevation. And now, Old Country Way, you know, that's becoming kind of the front street of, you know, Green Bush. You know, we've got the 50 Country Way, the new apartments that are, apartments that are going there. You've got the brewery, as we mentioned. So anyway, if you're doing an addition, it's an opportunity to kind of maybe snazz it up a little bit and have a nicer elevation than just this solid, huge blank wall. So anyway, I think there's, Hal's here from the Design Review Committee. I think that that's actually something that, I know you, with the previous proposal, you went through the DRC, it might be nice to get their input on maybe, you know, something even as simple as some vents or a shutter or, you know, it doesn't have to be, I'm not asking for something crazy, but something nice-looking for that elevation could potentially really enhance the street, in my opinion.
Anybody else?
No, I mean, my main point was that I felt that it was incomplete submission.
I agree. Well, I think you have a consensus sort of set of homework here. So I'll leave it to you. Fair to go back and work on this and sort of address these issues?
Yeah, I think they're all addressable. I can say mostly, I think we needed before we drew, I think we needed the direction that it was something that was going to be allowed and used.
Well, I think it's fundamentally difficult to really address it without at least having some elevation views and understanding exactly what it is you want to do. And I would like to make sure the Water Resources Commission has their opportunity to provide the input here, too. Do we need to do anything in terms of extending this?
Yeah, we need to, we need to review this because it's a, well, it's not a public hearing, so touching already, you need to vote this back.
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public meeting for Union Street Site Plan Administrative Review until May 25, 2017, at 8:45, and for a time to file with the town clerk, May 31, 2017.
Is the 25th not enough time?
Would give us a little more time so we get some drawings back to your prior to the meeting?
How about June, okay, June 8? Or the 22nd, yeah. Which one?
If we do the 22nd, that'll give us the time.
June 22nd?
To address the Water Resource Commission as well.
So be it.
Thank you.
All right.
We'll do it at 8 o'clock on.
June 28, 22nd?
June 22nd.
All right, I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public meeting for Union Street Site Plan Administrative Review until June 22, 2017, at 8:00 PM, and for a time to file with the town clerk until June 30.
You have a second?
Yep.
Paul, is it favored? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Progress.
Hey.
You have to look at it that way. It's positive progress.
So.
Yes, that's what I meant.
Pushing the item for 93, 97.
Off the island, off the agenda.
Okay. Okay, so this is continuing discussion of our favorite stormwater issue at Blanchard Farms Estates.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Back again?
Back again. Hopefully you're going to tell me that our temporary repair is done and functional?
It is, and it's very close to being the permanent solution, in my opinion. Since the last meeting, the site contractor, the general contractor at Lot 7, which is K&amp;E Construction, they retained Jimmy Merritt on a pond for to go out and do earthwork to immediately excavate that temporary swale that we presented the plan on. That was done very soon after the last planning board meeting. Since that point in time, they've been working toward providing final site grades out there. You know, we identified all of the measures from our original design that still needed to be complied with. The driveway grading needed to come up close to a foot and a half in certain locations. The side yard, you know, was not finished graded. They brought in significant fill and made it so that the side yard now drains out to Blanchard Farms as opposed to draining to the backyard. They've made significant improvements. With the swale out back, the swale, as you recall, runs parallel with the stone wall along the back of Whittyear Drive. You know, Mr. Merritt did grade in that swale, constructed it larger in size than designed. It has more than enough capacity for the storms that we've witnessed out there. We directed him to construct a burn along the backside of that stone wall, and that's all evident if you go out there on the site. Because of the rainfall we've had since the last meeting, though, I have not had a chance to do an as-built survey of the work that has been done. I was out there this afternoon. Those pictures were taken today. They were still moving material, grading with bulldozers today. To my eyes, it looks like what they've constructed is more than appropriate and will meet the intent of the original design. I'd like to say that, you know, pending my survey review of the site, which will happen in the next couple of days, I would be close to making a statement that the site is in substantial compliance with the original design. As you know, I've never made that statement on this lot, even though it is an occupied lot. I think we've gotten very close to that point. We've directed water out toward the street. We've contained it within the swale along the back of the site. Tomorrow, we are expecting a rainfall event. I expect it's going to be an excellent test for us. We'll have eyes out there seeing what's happening.
Okay, well, we're anxiously awaiting the test of that. I will withhold judgment on whether it's a permanent fix to the entire system. I think that's one of the things we need, is to get a confirmation that all the design grades are as they should be, and then really understand whether this whole system is functioning the way it was intended, or whether we need to actually go back and do similar modifications all the way across the entire property line. This is what I'm looking at here, so the stormwater's coming through here?
Correct.
Okay. And it's sort of, it's just all dirt right now, right? So is there any?
It is. It's lonesome, so, you know, as soon as weather permits, they will be hyperceding or putting down brass ceds so that they can establish a lawn in those locations.
Is there any, I think we're getting an inch or two of rain tomorrow, right?
Yes.
Is there any, any additional sort of measures we should take to make sure that it doesn't end up across people's yards?
You know, the temporary swale that was put in since the last planning board meeting, I think handled the rainstorms that we've had in the last 2 weeks. To my knowledge, that has handled it. So I would expect that this is more than going to suffice for tomorrow's rainfall event.
Let me ask, we have, it looks like we have some people from that area, so let me ask them how. The temporary swale... them how the temporary swale or whatever is functioning, at least within the last week or so?
We have not had any water.
None?
The sump pump kicked on a couple of times, but...
Nothing washing over the...
Nothing, nothing.
The yard?
No, six inches of water in the basement at that time.
That's good. Um, anybody else? Mr. Quinn?
Well, I was just waiting for Mr. Morse to finish up. I had a question.
Well, I just wanted, I just want to know if...
No, we haven't had any rain event, and my, I haven't seen any flooding on my property.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
This has all been loomed, and some of it's on a slope. With this rain event that's coming in tomorrow night, how much of this is gonna sort of shift down the hill?
Um, you know, that's, it's certainly subject to erosion until we have grass seed established. So, um, some of it might shift down the hill that would have to be brought back up and gullies filled in.
Do you think it would be worthwhile to throw some hay bales in there just to prevent it from going into the swale so that it doesn't countermand what you've already done?
Yep, we could, we could do that as a temporary measure tomorrow.
I think that might be a good idea.
I agree with you, Ann. I think it's probably something you gotta do early in the morning, because I think the rain's coming by noon or so.
And get the word to the...
Yeah, we certainly don't want to silt it over during the event.
Yep.
And, and am I mistaken, or did you, did you redo some of the, the rock swale? Or is it just regraded to it?
At, at the outlet of the detention basin, when we did the roadway as-built work, when we asked for the, you know, the original lot releases, we did identify that the, um, the outlet riprap wasn't extended as far enough as it was supposed to in the original design. So that was, you know, a punch list item to be done prior to, prior to coming in and asking for the final release. That work has been done, though, as part of this. Yes.
And this down here was another area where there was a big pond, right? So that's all been regraded there too?
That's all been regraded. Loam's been brought in and spread over that location as well.
Okay.
And then it looks like one of these pictures, looks like there was a tree that was cut down, um, it's in front of the riprap. Um, and then, like you said, there was a burn built up toward the wall. So will that stay, or does that, like, rot away because of the wall?
No, so I mean, in front of the wall is the, is the swale and the bottom of the swale, and then it burns up to the stone wall itself, so that, that would become vegetated over.
It would just go, okay, all the way up?
Yes.
And then on the other...
So how far out is the, the bottom of the swale from the wall generally? 10, 12 feet is it?
It, it varies. I wanna say it's at the closest, probably about five feet. Um, at the most, it's probably 15 to 20 feet out.
Okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Richard.
And I'm just, from this picture, what is that? Like, is there like a plastic tarp that's there? That's a barrier?
Yeah, they, they had put a tarp over a stockpile of loam the other day during one of the rainfall events.
Okay.
That's no longer there.
Oh.
As of today.
And so on the other side of that rock wall, then, the grass from the neighbor's yard is down about, looks like maybe a foot or six inches?
More.
More?
The stone wall's about two and a half, three feet.
So when this gets vegetated, it'll almost be like a retaining wall in a way, kind of, in the sense that there's a different...
It's almost level with the stone wall.
Yeah, that's what, in this picture, yeah, the, the dirt looks like it's almost up to the top of the stone wall.
Right, it's burned, it's burned up along the stone wall, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I, I honestly think we're in good shape for tomorrow, and I, I think we will be coming back and saying that this is in substantial compliance with the original design in very short order.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll test that theory out. Uh, yes?
I just have a question. Mr. Morse?
Just identify yourself.
My name's Tom Quinn, and I'm one of the voters. Mr. Morse keeps referring to the original plan, and my review of the original plan calls for retaining walls. I was wondering what happened to them.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not sure where you're talking about retaining walls, so do we have the original plan?
It's about in back of, of...
Right here.
Most of the houses on the Whittier Drive side, there were some short...
See that line there? See that line right there?
Mm-hmm.
That indicates a retaining wall. On Lot 8, there's a retaining wall. And Lot 7, there's a retaining wall. This is the original plans. There's two retaining walls here on Lot 10. Those retaining walls were never installed.
My opinion.
So that was basically for a walkout, right, on there, so that their grass would be, or their backyards would be fairly level?
Right, so there's a big, there's a big hill, and the water runs downhill. And as I brought up, brought to your attention, the downspouts are not in dry ones.
So, uh, the retaining walls, so this is the lower level down here?
Correct.
And so they took, they had two walls, and they were sloping down.
Feet.
Sloping down, so, well, I can see it on the drawing, I guess, I'd like to know what the change was.
Sure. So the retaining walls were originally shown on that so that we could achieve walkout basements in the back of these houses. Lots 7, 8, 9, I'm not certain about Lot 10, are, are walkout basements, but the contractors that built them or the builders, you know, decided to grade them off as opposed to install retaining walls. It should have a negligible effect on any stormwater runoff. Lot 8, you know, was the one where we came in and had that lot, you know, highly reviewed by Amory Associates, and they came up with the same analysis, that the removal of the stone wall and grading it off made no effect. The reason why is because what affects the, the volume and the rates of runoff is slope is one thing, but what we look at is we look at the longest time of concentration of, of stormwater getting to a location. The fact that we have a small segment that's sloped off is not impacting us. What we're looking at is we're looking at the longest, flattest path, which is the longest time of concentration. So having a smaller, um, you know, having a slope versus a retaining wall didn't really impact that. Looking at, secondly, the area that was contributory, and the area that we had on the lots generally was supposed to be from the faces of the houses out to the street, drained to the street. And in portions of the lots, Lot 8, for example, they actually went all the way to the back of the garage and the back of the driveway, and so there's additional area that drains out to the street and not to the backyard. The retaining walls would have negligible effect with respect to drainage.
So I'm, I'm a little confused by that. You said you look at the, the flattest slope?
Correct.
So the flattest slope would be where the retaining walls, inside the retaining walls?
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
But we no longer have that. So if that was your design criteria, it would have been longer?
So you still have, no, so you still have a flat area in between, in the middle of the house where you have the walkout basement in the back. Um, yeah, the, the T, we're talking about such a short distance, a time of concentration, that whether it's coming out of a sloped area or a flat area in the back, you're always rounding up to a minimum time of concentration, and that minimum is five minutes. That's, that's what was used in the original design calculations was five minutes. So whether it's sloped or whether it was runoff of a flat surface would have no impact on the calc.
Yeah, I do remember the consulting engineer talking about for that, which lot was the one where the garage was turned?
Lot A.
That was eight, where we had the additional review on it that came back with, basically with the same conclusion.
Right. I think the only problem is that we have the real world example of a lot of water, right? Draining in different places. Maybe it's related to this, maybe it's not, right? So I think we, we've got this temporary fix in place. Um, if we can get, I think Ann's right, if we can get some hay bales in there so it doesn't all wash into the swale again tomorrow, it's probably a good idea. And we'll test, test the theory on a fairly good rainstorm, but it's not, you know, the 25-year storm or the 50 or 100-year storm?
No.
Right? Um, so I still think, you know, kind of as a next step, we're gonna have to come back and revisit the performance of that whole system from one end to the other. Any other comments?
I, I had a couple things.
Yeah.
I'm gonna cut anybody off.
You have?
Okay, well, maybe, oh, oh, that's okay, go ahead, go ahead. Oh, okay.
The floor recognizes Ms. Harbord.
Good, yeah, we're good. Can't wait to see what you pull in here. Pat Brennan was out of the site today, and I know he wanted another pair of eyes, but right now, he's the one that really has the, the knowledge and the experience with this, this whole drainage situation. So he thought that, um, he said the swale looked good, it's wider than proposed, they built up along the stone wall to further protect against water flowing onto the Whittier Drive properties. They also extended the riprap swale to the end of new grass swale. And he took some pictures, which you have in your package.
Those are the ones he just gave us here.
Yeah, you might not have had a chance to really look at them. But the other thing I wanted to ask about was, um, you know, this is kind of a, still a little bit of a work in progress, and, um, as I'm, you know, here at Town Hall, there are concerns that I go out and respond to, and sometimes, um, those come up in here, and sometimes, you know, maybe they're not quite so much. So, uh, some of the things that, that I think I'm hearing people being concerned about are, um, one is just all the piles of loam and the fact that everything is kind of very raw out there. And, um, you know, it may not be expressed quite that way, but is there a timeframe once we get the permanent fix, say, uh, what did we say? Um, hopefully, May 25th, we get that worked out. Is there a timeframe for, um, hydroseeding after that? So that that whole area of Lot 8, I guess, not 8, I'm sorry, Lot 7, um, would be able to be hydroseeded, hopefully in time for, you know, before the weather gets really hot?
I, I think the goal is to hydroseed and put grass down as soon as possible. We were hoping to do it in the next week or two was, was the goal.
Well, I think that would be even better, but that's partly, I mean, I know we're probably gonna hear from the homeowner a little bit about that, I hope. Um, so that was, you know, that was just one piece. Um, another piece was that I'm still hearing a lot of concern about the vegetation that was taken out along the back of the stone wall. As far as the Whittier Drive properties, it's the back of their stone wall. Is, you know, Lot 8, 8, no, Lot 7, I'm sorry, Lot 7, um, I know there's a plan to put in a lot of plantings on Lot 7, and then I think Lot 5 had a lot, um, 5 Blanchard, so it's, yeah, I don't know what number that is. But, um, that was the lot, um, behind somebody at Whittier. Uh, but in between, I think there are gonna be some places where quite a bit of vegetation has been taken out. It was taken out, kind of in maybe the, um, over enthusiasm of someone clearing, but it still got taken out, and it wasn't supposed to. Or the houses got moved back, or for some reason, it's not there. Not as you go closer to Country Way, but as you go down Whittier Drive, it, you know, there's several places where that's happening. I think there might be one lot which would be Lot 8 that maybe still needs some more vegetation. Would there, hopefully be, would the board want to see that addressed since really, when that vegetation was taken out, um, that was, you know, that was a mistake. It was supposed to be left there.
Yeah. The, um, the original design plans did, did call for a limit of work that was 15 or 20 feet off of that stone wall.
Right.
And what you'll notice on the back, Lot A, all of the understory, certainly, all of the scrub was taken out. There are trees, or larger trees, I think, in, in a piece of that buffer. If there needs to be additional plantings, I could reach out to the property owner at this point. For Lot A, the builders, it's been conveyed at this point.
Yeah, I know it's 8, but I'm just, you know, bringing it up to see if there's...
Yeah, the, um, you know, the, the other thing...
I think it's just that Lot A is kind of gonna be the gap in the middle.
I might be able to shed some light on this John Bear, 18 grasshopper. I understand, and I've been part of correspondence between Mr. Gillespie and Mrs. Quinn, who's the one in the back. There's been an overture, a financial overture that has been presented through legal counsel, I think, and they were just waiting on an acceptance of that. So there is, uh, there is money being offered basically for acquisition, acquiring plantings and establishing some additional plantings, and that's been an ongoing discussion. I'm not in the middle of it. I was privy to some correspondence.
Okay, okay, that's great. Um, and then the only other issue that I'm hearing about is the orientation of the driveway on Lot, I mean, I hope that's great. I hope that's gonna work out.
I hope so, too.
Yeah. Um, the other issue that I'm continuing to hear about is the orientation of the driveway on number, uh, the house for the accessory dwelling.
Lot 7?
Lot 7, yeah. Um, there's a concern that it should be more, um, it should be perpendicular to the house and closer, closer to the garage than where it is. But where it is, it's, you know, back maybe three, four feet. Now, what I have responded was that it's extremely difficult if it's directly flush for the house, when you're pulling out of a garage, you know, your car takes a little bit of distance to get into the turnaround, and it's just, you know, I, from what I know of driveway design, I think it's gonna be difficult for that to work. But I wanted to bring that up and make sure the board knew that that was, you know, a concern, and that if there's anything further that needs to be addressed, that it be addressed now rather than, you know, we try to scramble and address it later.
I mean, as the, the original design, the house footprints on all of these, when we permit a subdivision, the final house footprints change from when the time we're in front of you to when the building permit gets pulled. The house footprint certainly changed on Lot 7. The driveway has changed to accommodate that. It still drains in the same direction. It still drains out to the street, or does as of this past week, drains out to the street and will be captured through the drainage system. You know, the physical orientation as far as someone backing out of the driveway and doing a three-point turn in the driveway to get out into the cul-de-sac, I would defer to the homeowner, but they probably back out of the garage and back straight into the cul-de-sac and drive straight ahead. They're not doing a three-point turn in the driveway.
Yeah, I think Mrs. Quinn had some...
Jackie Quinn has some thirty-one here. No, the driveway next, next door, back of us, the plan for the accessory dwellings provided for two parking spaces. And in that plan, their driveway comes off the cul-de-sac and kind of widens to their two-car garage. And right off the garage is their, as Laura put it, a turnaround.
Yeah.
Um, the homeowners continuously pull in every night and face right at us without needing, you know, they pull in and they face right at us, and their lights on. They don't need to park in that thing. That's not my, that's not my driveway, but they have a perfectly wide two-car garage and driveway there without having to pull in to the accessory dwellings.
Creates a nuisance. We seem to be the recipients from Lot 8 where the design was changed, and we brought this to the board's attention, where when the car pulls in the driveway, the headlights just sweep the back of our house.
So now we have Lot 8's headlights and Lot 7's turnaround come in, you know, if, when their in-laws move in, they'll maybe have a car, but right now, it's just the two vehicles that we see. One of them always stays out and one of them pulls into the, you know, accessory dwelling. But if you look at the plan, the accessory dwelling turnaround spaces are off the side of the front entrance to the garage. And right now, they come in and it's like, you say, three or four feet, I would, I would gather that it's further back towards the, you know, the circle, and they just pull in there every night. And, yes, screening will help. That's not in yet, but we, we...
There is screening that's going in there, though?
I haven't heard of any.
When I, when I talked to you the other day, you said that where they had to take the tree out the other day, they pulled the tree down, that you would let the board know that we're gonna... going to need some more screening to make up the fact that they took that tree down that was closer, that kind of stuck up, you know, towards their driveway area. It doesn't provide a lot, but it was something.
Well, I was just talking about, you know, vegetation in general, and that could be part of it.
Right, and you had said that you would have to look into what type of vegetation can be planted on a leaching field.
Because it's actually, it's right on top of the septic system, it's not a problem, I'm not a problem.
But my question is, does, the plan clearly shows, and it was outlined in blue, and I came up there and copy of it, it clearly shows the driveway, I didn't design it, I don't know who designed it, the turnaround is at the front of their garage. I didn't design that, but it's meant for the in-laws or the people that are going to be moving in with them to come in and turn and park. It's really not, we didn't, you know, assume that it was going to be used every day, just the two of them. It's not my garage, it's our driveway.
Yeah, how, if the board wants to, yeah, it's also that, or, you know, you would just have to work it out with your neighbors and, you know, talk to them about maybe-
This design is creating a nuisance for us, for Lot 7 and Lot 8. We didn't approve of it, the planning board did.
Oh, well, I think that's why I was here.
Is it built as, as it was approved, or is it built differently?
It was shown, it was shown in a way that, you know, it really couldn't be used as a turnaround, that maybe it was not intended to be exactly as intended to use as a pull-off.
And, I didn't bring the other plans up. My house is here, in Lot 8, and people pull in to Lot 8, as we brought to your attention earlier.
Right.
The headlights come right-
But there was screening, but what, two of the trees died, or three of the trees?
No, that was the other one. That was the other house, because you can't put trees up here.
No, that's, he's not always talking about that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
He was talking about the other house.
So, out of this whole development, we're the recipients of headlights coming right at my house here, and right at my house here.
Oh, thanks.
This does not seem to be constructed this way, it's further down, it's down like here.
Right, exactly, that's the way it's supposed to be.
And it's more of an angle, do you say it's angled back towards you more? It's not, it's not really constructed that way. You want me to take a look at this?
Yeah, I'd like to. Thank you.
Well, I-
It's Hunter, you know, it's made of-
I didn't draw or prepare that plan, so it's the first time I'm seeing it.
This is another copy of the plan.
So, yeah, so it's down, yeah, it's about five feet down.
This is probably shifted, you know, like Laura said, out a little bit. Same, same orientations, just out a little bit from the face.
But they have, no one has paved that driveway yet, and if it's going to be addressed, I think now is the time to address it.
That's the plan with the certificate, right here, and that's where the driveway's located.
Right, so whether it's five feet one way or the other, it doesn't really make a difference, right?
It's still pointing in my direction, so.
And it's right on the leaching field?
Yeah, yeah, it must be reinforced.
So you can't even put like a fence in there or something?
Maybe you should eliminate that.
Well, they have to have parking for the accessory dwelling, and that's what that's for.
Well, they got a driveway.
They have a two-car driveway, a two-car garage.
The planning board approved it so that people wouldn't be blocking the garage if it was ever rented to anyone who doesn't, you know, down the road.
Is anyone to protect me on this one? Are you advocating for it, is anyone else besides?
Well, why do you think I just, you know, I just did bring up a whole number of issues that were primarily issues that you had, which I didn't feel had been really completely aired, and that's why I did that.
Well, I'm bringing everyone's attention now.
So let's do it one at a time. With Lot number 7, the trees, do you know, is there a plan to replace those, the ones that have died?
No.
No, that's Lot 8. Mine is on Lot 8, there's one on Lot 7 back here.
When, when the accessory was agreed to-
Okay, now, this is-
Well, this is tied in. Part of the agreement was that there'd be, like, I think, 30 trees and shrubs and a number, it's specified in the-
It's on the top of the plan.
Exactly what type of landscaping that was required.
Yeah, like 10 six-foot and seven-foot.
10, 18 to 24-foot.
Yeah.
And then 10 deciduous, that are 18 to 24 inches. So there was a total of 30. It's on the top of that plan of their house.
None of the planting specified on the accessory dwelling has been done yet, obviously.
Right.
But they're not going to be done on the-
You said the driveway should have been on the front?
No.
Well, that was already an issue that we had addressed.
Now you have a mirror of where my house is and how the headlights are coming, it's like, I'm in the process.
So, like I said, one at a time. On Lot number 8, okay, there was, we had approved the trees along the back there, the agrovides, there was like four, five, or-
Seven.
Seven.
And four died.
Yes. So is there a plan, my question, to replace those?
I don't know, the owners are living there now, and Mr. Gillespie doesn't have anything to do with it anymore. That would be up to, you know, when you told them that they had to put seven agrovides there, they did, but we knew that they could die any, any day, and they could rip them out if they wanted to, it's not, it's not our property.
It's not a covenant running with the land to protect us.
So, you know, when we were, when we were disapproving of that setup, you know, I remember Ms. Burbine said, well, you know, it's raw land, it can be, it can be a terrorist, and all kinds of screening can be provided, but the only thing that Mr. Gillespie was made to do was plant seven agrovides. And four of them, the owners pulled out a couple of weeks ago.
Well, they were, they were dead.
Yeah.
They were dead, I don't know if they have any, any intentions of replacing them, huh?
So there wasn't any warranty on those, or like for a year, yeah?
I don't know, I wasn't-
Because it seems like those, at the minimum, it seems like those should be replaced, at least in my opinion, since those were agreed upon.
Did you ask the person, or did the question-
They weren't, they weren't triangle.
Okay, Gillespie.
It wasn't be done.
Okay.
Upon a landscaping with them, from Don Gillespie.
So that's one issue. Then the second issue is Lot 7 with the accessory dwelling. And there, but in that case, I feel like there is a plan going forward with the vegetation, which is not there yet, correct?
But it was, that vegetation is to just buffer the back zone, and that's not, when we sit and look up, you see this driveway is seven feet higher than where we're looking at, so, you know, six-foot bushes aren't going to do any, or two-foot bushes aren't going to screen their driveway from us, but their turnaround that they use, you know, they use it every night.
But I believe the plantings were much more involved than just bushes, weren't they?
Yeah, there were deciduous trees, emergreen trees, there was a lot of different things.
Right.
And some of it could wind up being taller than, you know, it's definitely going to be taller than shrubs.
Right. It's just going to take a while to get it all grown in.
Yeah, exactly, they have it, I think you need it in just the right spot, too.
On the plan here, it indicates the bushes-
Like all the bushes are written on the plan itself.
Right, okay, right.
The type, the size, excluding agrovides, excluding hemlocks, you know, but in all 30 were to be provided, but I think Laura had said those were really for just screening in the back, going along the stone wall.
I don't think any of that was contemplated to address the driveway.
Like the driveway back was on Lot 8, but the same issue. Two, those 10 houses, two of the houses that was in there.
Those agrovides were right behind the driveway, though, right? The ones, the ones that died, they were up, right?
They were right by the edge of the driveway, at the end of the driveway.
Yeah. But we don't have any recourse to make them put those back?
I'm not sure what our recourse is either, on that.
Well, I think we generally expect them to survive, right? That they have to replace them if they die, right? So we should make sure-
Certainly within a year.
I think we should touch with Don Gillespie and Tracy.
I think that, you know, we have some neighborhood issues here, that in one sense aren't within our purview, other than to replace some dead trees. I think, is there some way, somehow, that we can talk to these homeowners and just say, hey, this is what's going on, is there any way that you can all help us out? Because we all have to live together and make peace. And we're not doing too much of it, the Quins need to be satisfied, it's tough with a subdivision that hasn't been truly finished off, and all kinds of water and other issues that have been going on for a very, very long time. So is there some way we can mediate this so that we can please some of the people? Because-
I think that's a great idea to throw out and just hope that people can work together.
Well, I think that if a call from the planning board to the accessory dwelling people and say, hey, you know-
Well, they're right here.
Ah, okay, hi.
Tracy Hunter, I live at Lot 7, 9 Blanched Farm.
Great.
Would you like to cock?
I have several questions. I wasn't aware of that issue, so this is new to me. And like Laura said, our yard right now is a disaster. We have no driveway, we have no grass, I mean, and it's been that way since we moved in in November, so we're kind of at the mercy of everything else going on before we do As part of our construction contract with KNE, that wasn't provided, it's up to us to do the landscaping, but we've, we've been held up, waiting for the regrading to happen, so that's why I'm here, to figure out sort of where the end line is and when we can move forward with all of that. In terms of the cutoff for the, the pull-up parking spot for the accessory dwelling, I don't know if, when we do the grass, if we can plant some sort of tree along the front of that to block the headlights, I, certainly we can look into it, we just, we haven't gotten that far yet.
Yeah, I don't suspect you're going to be able to, if it's right on top of the leaching field, though. I think you would end up with bigger problems.
It could be somehow like beyond the field, though.
The only difference is going to be the height.
Yeah, it's a different height. That's why I was going to, you can put a small fence up there, too, but you still can't get into a leaching field, you can't do anything there.
I have some question about the size of the turnaround. When it's a one-bedroom accessory, is it required that you just have one or two spaces? Like, does it?
Two.
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 So according to that plan, it's 10 feet long by 20 feet wide, which would be about 20 by 20.
You know, somehow, some way, I mean, we can go around and round tonight, can we figure out a way to make this work so that the Quins are satisfied, the Hunters are satisfied, and everybody can sort of somehow get on the same page? I think the proof will be tomorrow around 6 o'clock, to see what's happening with water. And I think that's the first obstacle that we have to deal with, and then we can, we can go from there. There are issues, the unfortunate part is, when one thing goes wrong, it's downhill with a thud, and it just keeps rolling and rolling and rolling. And we're still rolling down the hill.
So let's, let's just take one at a time, then. We're going to get the rain test tomorrow, right? And we want to make sure that system is working, right? And then at, at our next, it's the next meeting and the meeting after, we're going to talk about a permanent, making sure we've got a permanent solution for the stormwater system, right? You're going to talk to the builder about Lot 8 and replacing those trees, right? And then I, I think Anne's suggestion is a great one, is that, you know, could we facilitate a conversation to figure out if there's a way to provide some screening from Lot 7 on that, you know, on that, on that pull-out?
You know, it's over the leaching field, can you put a fence?
Uh, because you're going to-
You have to do posts?
You're going to, yeah, you're going to hit the distribution piping.
And where is the placement of that turnaround? Is it by the plan?
Well, I don't think it's exactly by the plan, but I'm not sure, did you say that it didn't matter that much which direction that was going?
No, I asked you today about, the other day, about-
The query was posed to you, Ms. Harbaugh, as to the design that was approved by the planning board, is that the design that's supposed to be followed?
Of course.
Well, that's the plan that's approved, so I think we've just answered-
Okay, I think we're just sort of-
Right, we're just going around in circles there. I mean, that, that particular plan is going to create the problem for you, right? So the question is, how do we solve that problem, right? And is there a way to put plantings or some other barrier that would provide some, some screening?
Well, and just clarification, my understanding was it, maybe the way it is right now is not exactly like the plan, but it's just shifted one way or the other, it's not, the angle is still the same, is that correct?
It's on the left side of their driveway, yeah.
Yes, it's on the left, it's on the closest side to us.
Right.
Maybe one could reconsider and put it on the other side.
Is there any way that we can change the orientation of, you know, their property from what was approved?
I don't think that's something we can resolve, so.
No, I think, you know, it's going to be about whether you can figure out a way to provide some screening here, I just-
I can ask the health director if there's anything that can be planted up here, I mean, I've seen mounted septic systems with shrubs going across them, I don't know how they do that, I don't know what the risks are. I can find out, what are the risks, what can you do, if anything, but I need to make sure that we're all aware, that I may not get an answer that's the answer that, that anybody wants. I may get an answer that nothing can be planted there, period. So if that's the answer I get, I'm going to come back and tell you that, but then I think there's going to have to be some other kind of discussion or-
Now, when the swale are plants, those trees that were allotted to be, to be provided by them, is that, are those going to be allowed to be planted in that swale area that they have just done, if that remains?
No, it's not going to be in the drainage swale, right?
So where would those go?
You've got to avoid that on the sides, yeah, but-
On the sides, along the centerline of it, no.
And you don't want it too close, I don't know what the 100-year storm or the 20-year storm, volume is going to be there.
So we would have no screening?
You're talking about putting them on the sides of their property and not along the sides?
No, no, just on the side.
Yeah, I think even, so close to the rock wall, right, is what I'm hearing. Like along the rock wall, basically, but you couldn't be in the middle of the swale, like the lowest point of the swale?
That would probably kill them.
That would, yeah, that would not be good.
It was supposed to be a non-work zone, which would give you a buffer, and now, my understanding is correct for Mr. Morse, they're putting the swale right up against the wall.
No, I don't think that's-
Well, they've mounded it up, the dirt comes up to the wall, but the swale itself, the centerline, is about 10 to 20 feet away.
You know, five, five or 15 feet away.
Okay. Five is pretty close, I don't, I don't know how-
Probably at the closest point, I haven't surveyed it exactly yet, but five is the closest point.
I think we're going to need that for the permanent design, and we ought to do the landscape plan at the same time, so we know we can get them in.
Yeah, I do need a list of the plantings for the accessory dwelling, I was not involved in that process, so if you can get me that, thank you.
The only kind of open item that I heard here was a question about drywells, which were supposed to be part of the stormwater design, that were not installed?
The drywells on Lot 7 have been installed.
Okay, and is that the only place that we were missing drywells?
No, they're missing drywells on Lot 8 and the other house, both of the houses that Mr. Gillespie built. The gutters on the corner, the downspouts, discharge water onto the surface, and it comes running down the hill. And that's how I-
The hill's towards your property?
Correct.
So can we look at that and figure out, I mean, if they need, if they're supposed to have drywells, then they should have drywells.
I believe there are drywells installed on those lots, I'll check to make sure that the downspouts are connected, or in certain cases, we didn't, in certain cases on the original plans, we didn't specify that all of the roof area was directed to drywells, but maybe half of the roof. I will check Lot 7 and Lot 8 and Lot 9, those are the three that are in question.
Those were supposed to be in subcatchment A. Those were supposed to be in subcatchment A.
All right, so maybe you could report back on that to just, I think if you could just coordinate with Laura on that so we know, and then we can, we can talk about it at the meeting on the, whatever it is, 25th or whenever that's this, whenever that next meeting is. Okay.
Can I contest one more question?
Yes.
Sorry. So the meeting on the 25th, can we not plant until then?
Can you not plant?
Do we not put grass in until then?
Oh, no. I mean, well, the issue's going to be how, how does the swale perform, right? You know, if we think it's performing okay, then you probably can plant grass there, particularly, I would think, the slope down to it, right? But what we're talking about is, is kind of going back up the chain, uphill in the swale, all the way to the other end, right? And making sure that that system is performing all the way down to the riprap, right? And so we want to make sure that works.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, I don't know how you make the transition there at the swale and all that. It's a good question, but I think we're going to have to at least see how it performs tomorrow, anyway.
Well, Greg, you had mentioned that as soon as the storm was over, you'd wanted to do the seeding or the hydroseeding as soon as possible, right?
Absolutely.
And that would be on your lot.
So my concern is, is that if we do it, like I said, we're responsible for all of it, so when you do the hydroseeding and the planting along the wall, and, you know, any other plantings that we choose, I mean, we're on worth of like $10,000 to $15,000 worth of yard work to do, so if six months from now, oh gosh, we have another big storm and there's water again, you know, am I going to be told that my yard has to be ripped up again? You know, I just don't want to do all of that if we're not sort of at the finalized point where...
Yeah, I agree with you. We don't want to be there either.
Yeah, no, I know.
That's, that's our intent, is to get a final permanent design that's functional. And I'm hoping we'll be able to do that by the 25th, and if there's additional work that has to happen, you know, let's get it done fast so people can plant, we can plant the, because they're going to put in some landscape planting as well, right? That is not your responsibility, right? It's developer's responsibility. If I'm, am I saying that right?
No, I think it was theirs.
Yeah, the way their contractor left it with them, they left them with...
That was on the approval of the...
No, no, I'm talking about the plantings that they were going to do, the original subdivision. They were, there's a whole list of plantings that were going in.
Not along that line?
Not there?
No.
All right.
That all came when the accessory dwelling was approved.
Oh, that's where they're waiting to receive planting. We're curious.
I thought we were just looking at a list of them.
But that was from the accessory dwelling report?
Okay, accessory dwelling, okay.
I do have a motion for...
Okay.
Okay. I kind of don't always like to use the stick too much when everybody is trying to go along, so I took that out.
Okay.
If you want to put it in.
All right.
Ask the chair if he wants that in there or not.
What's that?
Play a sentence.
I think that was kind, first of all, I can do the finds.
Right, we don't need it.
And if there's like a terrible storm and everything's a mess, and we need to do finds.
Right, but then again, I look at Missouri, and no matter what type of plan you've got going, it's duck soup.
I suggest we leave it at that.
Leave it off.
Yeah.
I move that the planning board to have the necessary information to review and approve on May 25, a plan showing a permanent solution to the drainage problems at the rear of lot seven and eight and any other affected lots in Blanchard Farm, states with all pertinent drainage calculations, must be filed with the board by May 11, 2017, at 12:00 p.m., with a fee of $2,500 for review by the board's consulting engineer.
Second.
Paul's a favor?
Hi.
Okay.
You just mentioned the consulting engineer. Could you identify who the consulting engineer would be?
We haven't selected him yet. We have, we have multiple options. Is that right, Laura?
Yeah. Thank you. All right, thanks, everyone. Do you have the, I just saw you looking at the list of like the upcoming meetings?
He'd go nuts if he lived at my house.
Okay, so again, just to, I think I had to mention this to you last time, but I will not be at the June, or the May 25 meeting, so for the Blanchard Farm, if there's a decision or continuation, just to let you know, I won't be here for them.
Where are you going to be?
Australia.
Excuse me!
You can Skype him. We'll Skype him. How's that?
I think the big thing is, once we get the Toll Brothers filing, because that is a special permit, so, you know, maybe we'll have six after May 20th, but who knows? But that'll be one where it'll be tricky, like, because we'll really want to have...
Might have to push.
...all the way through. So if you can give us plenty of notice, I think Karen's already sent some warning emails out about that.
Well, regardless of the election, Reggie will be with us no matter what. So he will be here, regardless.
But let's just, if we know schedules, then we can...
I'm not going anywhere with you.
We can know. Well, yeah, at times. I hope so. We can just hopefully not schedule something on a, on a meeting that, you know, we don't have a full, you know, a full group here, so. What do we have left?
Signs. Can we, do we need to do that tonight, or can we?
Well, we have here...
Oh, okay, sorry.
I didn't come for that.
Oh.
It might not take too long.
Well, come, come on, and, yeah, you have a very late DRC meeting.
So Hal Stokes, chairman of the design review committee. I just was, I contacted Laura last week because I think I had heard that some signage was going to be coming before you, and the design review committee, at least two out of these three signs, had stated before conditionally that we'd like to see the sign designs before you had to vote on the whole package so that we could have some input. I understand, though, that maybe there's a timing issue or something, so that, you know, I mean, under, under ideal circumstances, that applicant would bring that sign, signed drawings and everything back to us. We'd have the opportunity to take a look at those and then make our recommendations to you before you had to act on it. And I just wondered if we were out of sync, just on terms of a meeting schedule, or did...
Well, we haven't seen any. Nobody's come to us with signs, right?
Were we right on, right on, 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 sync? Okay, good. I mean, as far as I, as far as I saw it, I think some of the, what came to my attention was from the broadcast of the last planning board meeting. There was a, it sounded like the library signage, I think, was going to come...
Oh, yeah, I think that you...
Library signage was in the company for you, and...
And the safety building, the public safety complex.
I don't believe they've even submitted a design for that yet, that I'm aware of.
Well, I have something that just came in late this afternoon, because I've been trying to get something on that.
Okay.
But, but I think we also need to talk a little bit about the scope of what's reviewed, the branding that's been done, and the decision about the graphic and the text, which has all been approved by the board's agreement, and it's also been copyrighted. I think there's not really too much latitude at this point to start, you know, like playing with that, because it's been copyrighted and...
You're talking about like the...
The lighthouse and the dory.
The DC sign.
Well, these are all part and parcel of the same thing.
But won't there also be other signs, you know, that say, this is the, you know, fire station and all that kind of?
There's, you know, right now, they're talking about using that logo and that text for the public building, the public safety building, the library, and the, what's, what the heck is the other one?
The middle school.
The day school, right.
And of those three, it's kind of playing out a little differently with all of them. The library has that long, thin sign, it's 13 feet long by one feet high, and the only thing seem to be going with that is to keep the exact same size and shape, but to do it in the logo, you know, with the branding. It's, you know, everyone wants it, the lighting is already installed where that sign is going to go.
At the library?
At the library. That was done without any, you know, connection with, with the planning office, but it's been done. So I think they are actually cutting back on the lighting because it was too intense for the neighbors.
Right, that was another thing that I know we talked about in our meeting, it probably came to you also, that the neighbors were concerned that the lighting might be too...
So I'm, I'm a little confused here. Is there, did somebody actually design a sign for the library? There's like a design somewhere?
The sign designer who did all the branding is, and who's done the signs that are...
Mark Fagan.
Sort of the generic signs that are going to use it, he's been asked to do something for the library.
Has he done anything?
He hasn't done it yet, but I mean, you know, I think...
So is there any reason we can't have a look at it? I mean, it's not like we're changing, we're not going to change the sort of the branded logo and stuff, but it seems like graphic design is all about, you know, kind of it all fitting right on the, on the sign and all that, so. I mean, I guess the question is, are there variables that it would be good to have somebody provide some info to, and, and other variables that you can't change, right?
Yeah, and I think that's the tricky part, because initially, I thought we would have one similar sign for the public, for all the buildings. It would be about the same size and shape, and the only thing that would be different would be the name of the building. So even the town hall, you'd have the, the dory and the lighthouse and the blue and the white, and it would say Citrus Town Hall on it. And the library would say Citrus Town Library, and so on.
So, okay.
But I have to just, you know, otherwise, it's just going to get crazy. So the sign that the library had, I had a sit-down with Tricia, and her point was, because of the number of people involved and their attachment to that particular size and shape of a sign, there, you know, there's a foundation of, I don't know, you know, 50, 100 people at the library, that it really basically, she wants it to be that size and shape, because otherwise, it's just going to take months to get a sign that everyone agrees on. So there's sort of a...
She's submitted a drawing to show us that the designer...
Well, I'm getting one from, from the designer, but, you know, we're paying for it, so there's that little bit of investment. I mean, this is not going in a...
It's not different than what we asked Annie to cover, you know?
I'm sorry. This is not going in a direction that I particularly think is the best. I'd like to see more consistency, because there's so many differences between the library building, the town hall building, the public safety building, that I think if you had some consistency with the signs all looking the same, it would just be kind of a nice thing. But that's only my, you know, my take on it, it's your take on it that's important. And, you know, my take on it has nothing to do with what's coming out of this process. So I guess we'll just go ahead with the 13 by one-foot sign, and we'll have you guys look at it, and, you know, if, if somebody at a higher up level says, you know, I'm going to do, you know, Plan B and, you know, not do this, please just don't come back to me, because it's, it's more involved than that.
So, so we're going to get a sign design, right?
Yes, yeah.
And it's going to be this 13 by one foot, right?
Yeah.
And you're going to look at it and say, how, how can I make this, if it needs to be tweaked, how best could I help them tweak it, right? Because we're going to spend how much money on a sign? Couple thousand dollars, probably?
Probably, yeah, but maybe not even, but maybe a thousand.
But you're going to spend a thousand dollars, you might as well do it right the first time instead of do it over, right? So...
The library would pay for that.
Yeah, but it doesn't, doesn't matter.
No, I, I hope so.
Why do it twice, right? So if there's professional sort of design, sign design recommendations we can make, we can do that, right? If people choose to ignore those recommendations, then, you know, that's, that's what it is. But I don't see any reason why they can't say, well, this is what we want, here it is. If, if we have some recommendations, fine. If you look at it and you say, this is, this is god awful, and, you know, this will never work. At the end of the day, you know, that's all we can do, right?
Yeah. Okay, but, okay, I didn't...
Can I ask a real quick question?
Well, I just had a couple more things I wanted to cover. So in addition to that, the library sign, I think, is going to be fairly innocuous. It's going to have the blue and the white and the dory and the lighthouse that are, those things are not changing, and the text is not going to change either, but it was size and shape and all of that, you know, who knows what will happen to that through some kind of design process, hopefully. So that's one type of sign. The other signs were, I think you got in your packets or distributed electronically the middle school sign, which was kind of a big brick installation with a post. Yes, yeah, that sign. And then kind of a similar sign is this one, which would be the, this is the public safety building text sign.
Are they allowed to have that under the bylaw?
I think because it is public safety, and these are going to be messages like evacuate, sand well, so whatever it is.
Or don't overload the electrical outlets.
Yeah, well, something important to know, so...
Meet Rappel.
So, I'm sorry, is this, was this submitted by the architects for this, or for the public
safety, or...
Yes. Not by the architects, but by the, this is something that the fire department has identified as what they're looking for.
It's being donated by somebody.
It is?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so I'm...
Is this our only option, then? Is this like a Eureka thing?
Well, even on here, there's a slightly, there's, there's a fairly similar one, I mean, it almost looks like it's the same, you know, it's very much the same style, the start of the high school and the back. But I think the least that they could do, if they want to keep using the branding, is they could have a sign with a blue and a white on the top instead of something else. I mean, they don't have to use the town, if we've all decided on what the branding is supposed to be, then we should be using it.
Yes.
And the base, maybe there's some way, I mean, I assume the base has got to be a certain size to support this thing, but maybe there's a way to make that base a little more attractive.
Because they're police and fire, do they not have to come before the design review?
They are going to come before the design review, as far as I know.
Right.
I mean, as soon as we can set a meeting date, you know, we're going to get going, and we have some really interesting discussions.
I'm sure we will. Well, I feel like I'm learning a lot right now. Maybe I wasn't reading the right part of the newspaper, but, see, I thought we were going to be looking at signs that looked kind of like this individually for one for the library, one for the gate school, and so forth. I see this alongside it. I think this branding, I'm all for the branding.
Okay.
But I didn't realize, I thought the branding was about historic districts and things like that. that. I didn't realize all town buildings were going to have this signature sign.
That's the, that's the plan.
Was that, okay, I, that, I did not realize that. Was that clear to everybody?
It is now.
Yeah.
I think it's only clear because Laura had mentioned it maybe several weeks ago or several meetings ago.
We've talked about this for over a year, and there was some discussion, because I remember that we went before design review with Mark Faberman about all of this, because there was an issue over the color, there was an issue over some things, and, and I felt that at that point, it had in fact been resolved. I have to say, from a design standpoint, I think this is one of the most hideous things I've ever seen, and I, I would hate that we use it.
I agree with you.
That is horrible.
Yeah.
Absolutely wretched. And I think, God, we can do better.
And how does, how does this integrate with this?
It doesn't.
There's none of this here.
No.
Yeah, there's nothing.
Nothing. This has no redeeming value at all.
Right, so, did.
So, you had a lot of work to do.
Yeah, I guess so. I guess so.
But remember, the answer's six, two by one.
Well.
And there're going to be a lot of people, I think, at your meeting.
About signage?
Yeah, I already told Tricia, you know, she, she wants, she's welcome.
Are they, they're talking about the freestanding sign that I put on the road, not the one that's mounted on the.
Well, I wasn't talking about the library so much, because I think that's going to be, well, is it going to be three by five, or is it going to be one by 13, or, you know? Because the content isn't, isn't a problem. I mean, I, I don't think the content is going to be too up for discussion on these other ones.
You mean the name of it? City of Town Library?
Well, I think we're going to dispute that.
But I guess.
It's how it looks.
My main question was, on that, like, you know, that sign that's currently at the library, you know, there's the post and the frame. My question would be, is that what they're trying to reuse that post and frame, which I think is really bad?
I, I, I don't know, but that does not go with the branding, the frame and the post.
It's got to go.
No.
Right. So, can we leave all of this to the Design Review Committee and have?
As we should.
Now that you know we're trying to keep a consistent brand, right, and use the, the signature logo, right?
Yeah.
And it seems like that's the process to get the best.
Personally, I think that, I agree with Laura in that that's a great way to have uniformity, or kind of tie all these public buildings together by having a theme that's somewhat similar. Like, you know, if it's a different shape or whatever, I'm okay with that, but seeing the dory and the lighthouse and having the same text font and the same colors, all these signs, would really unify a lot of the public buildings, I think would be really nice.
Yeah, I think it would look good.
Yeah, okay, so, that's really, I think, answered my prior questions.
But, yeah.
Although I had one other sign issue, I just don't think it's coming for anybody yet.
Oh, what was that?
The Tedeschi's that's going to be turned into a.
Seven Eleven?
Eleven.
I haven't seen that yet.
I'm working on that one. It's not going to come in front of the planning board for site plan review because it's, it's the same use. It's only a different owner that's, you know, that's the only thing that's changing.
Right, but.
But the signage is, is.
The signage should come here, right?
The building department, they think, you know, they're kind of stretching things a little bit, but they think that you all can look at the, well, not really stretching. We, we are looking at it as a site plan waiver for the planning board, so as that, it could be, you know, delegated to the designer.
Well, they've already put up the banner, Seven Eleven, over the existing Tedeschi sign.
I'm all mounted on it for sure, right, but, but I was just.
I have had five calls into those people.
I noticed that, you know, I drive by that every day. I don't believe Tedeschi's had a tall, you know, sign that said Tedeschi's light it up or anything out by the street.
No, they did not.
I think Seven Eleven does that quite frequently, so I, I was just hoping that because it was existing use, they didn't think they had the authority to then stick a pole, a sign on a pole.
Well, we should make sure it's consistent with sort of our concept of a master plan in the area, right?
So, it will.
I think you want like those, those poles with a flapping flag.
Well, think of the Seven Eleven at Queen Anne's Quarters in, you know, on Route 53. They've got a big, you know, pole out by the road with a great big sign on it.
We're not treating, we're not treating, you know, Gannett like Route 53, right?
Right. Well, no, but you never know what.
But I think it's, it's important.
What they're going to do if they don't have to come before you at all.
Right.
So, it sounds like you're working on.
I'm, I'm working on trying to get them to come in. I mean, this may be another one where we have to use the occupancy permit as, you know, as the stick and just say, hey, you're not going to get it unless, you know, you come in here.
Unless it's already been given to them.
Let's not even go there. I, I don't know.
So, so how are you working on it? Are you going to send them a letter saying, you know, we're expecting?
Yeah, I'm going to need to send them a letter, because I made something like four phone calls, something like that.
Just get it on the record and.
Yeah, yeah, and I'll send it like certified or something.
And this is, I think I might have asked this question before, like, down at the Harbor, where there's the, I guess, it's still not that new, but the hardware store, there used to be the Olive.
The big, big.
Yeah, it seems like it's so huge, but I guess they didn't have to come before the Design Review Committee or the Planning Board because it was within the, the dimensional requirements?
Well, yeah, I think that's one of the things. The other thing is where it's retail to retail, it doesn't have to come in front of the planning board, and they're a little, you know, arbitrary about what comes for a site plan waiver.
Okay.
And 100 square feet is the size limit on business signs. So, you know, that's something that needs to be looked at, and, you know, hopefully Tadley will look at it or someone, but that needs to be dealt with.
Right. Because to me, that just seems like, personally, it's overs, yeah, exactly. The font is oversized based on the, the whole retail experience of the other buildings.
And the hardware.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
Okay, I think we, I think we've got it.
We beat a dead horse to a sign.
Yes.
When's your next DRC meeting?
Well, we normally, we haven't yet scheduled one for June, right? But we could, or did we just?
I think you need to as soon as possible, because the library, for instance, needs.
Yeah, the June.
And we're going to have some problems scheduling it.